Councilman Baker.
Support.
Councilman Galloway seconds that motion to excuse Councilman Lennon and we are delivering more agendas to our overflow audience in the room tonight. Madam Clerk, we took roll call and we are now voting if you would have us vote on excusing Councilman Lennon.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes as well, that passes, thank you. Next item, madam clerk, is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or requests to the agenda, if not, a motion to adopt as is?
So moved.
Councilwoman Baker moves and seconded by Councilman Galloway.
Correct, and we're adopting the revised agenda that was on the council table this evening and sent out shortly before.
Correct, and we have copies in the back.
That's a second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes as well. Next item, please.
Presentation by Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, madam clerk. Good evening.
My name is Jessica Stelger, Communication Specialist for the Ferndale Public Schools, and I have a lot of great news to share tonight. First off, a university high school student named Maya Stroud received last week a full ride to the University of Michigan Summer Science Academy. She is a junior at UHS and is also dual enrolled at Lawrence Tech and is very excited about her upcoming summer learning opportunities. In sports news, our basketball team is undefeated in their OAA Blue Division. They are league champs and they start playoffs this week. Their new coach, Tom Staton, is a Ferndale High School alumni and at his first year coaching varsity, he has turned the team around to a 17-and-3 record. We are very excited for them to start their playoffs this week. Also, our alternative high school basketball team is in the midst of their state playoff tournament. It is playing the semifinal game this Thursday. Aaron Cook is a Ferndale High School junior and he is a gold medal gymnast. We found out that Aaron competed in the 2009 World Age Group Trampoline and Tumbling Competition in St. Petersburg, Russia, last November and is the reigning world champion. He brought his gold medal to school today and they had a little pep assembly. It was very cool.
Wow.
Also, this past weekend, we had four of our Ferndale High School students make all-state wrestling. This is the first year we've ever sent five wrestlers to the state meet and out of those five, four are considered all-state. Ryan Watts finished in second place in the state for the 145-pound division. Keith Williams earned a fifth-place medal at 285 pounds. Cody Crocker finished eighth with 215 pounds and Lorenzo Lynch finished ninth. We are very proud of them. This is the, I believe, 12th year in a row we've had an all-state wrestler at Ferndale High School. This coming weekend, Connor Omira is a Ferndale High School senior and he will be competing at the state swim meet. And he also went last year, so we are cheering him on. For community news, we'd like to thank everyone who came to the Ferndale Education Foundation fundraiser this past Thursday at Boogie Fever. We don't have the total numbers in, but we have expected to raise about $16,000 for the students and staff of the Ferndale School District. And we are very grateful to everyone who came out and had a good time and donated to the cause. The Ferndale High School Annual Musical is coming up at the end of March. This year, they are performing the pajama game. And performances are March 20th and 21st and 26th through 28th. All Friday and Saturday performances start at 7:30 p.m. Sunday matinees are at 3:00 p.m. All the performances are at Ferndale High School Auditorium at 881 Pinecrest. And tickets are available at the door from AJ's Cafe, the PR Rec Center, and the Kulik Center. $6 for adults, $4 for students and seniors, and $3 for children under 12. Spring Break Camp is about a month away and we just want all the community members to know that if you have students in our district, K through six, we have a spring break camp that they can come to at John F. Kennedy School. For a small fee, the students have educational activities to do all day, they take field trips, and it's an opportunity for them to do something during break instead of staying at home. If anyone's interested, they can contact Gretchen Abrams at 248-586-8795. I'd just like to briefly address school funding. There's talks again in the news about district, local districts, that are going to have to make cuts to compensate for the lack of funding from the state. And we just want the community to know that the Ferndale Schools is committed to remain a full-service district. We are not going to ask our students to pay to play and we are not going to be cutting any of our fine arts programs. So if anyone has any more questions, they can call the Community Relations Office at 248-586-8651. That's it for me.
Thank you. Congratulations to the gymnasts, the wrestlers, and the swimmers as well. Very nice. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentation by the Traffic Improvement Association.
Thank you. We did ask the Traffic Improvement Association to do a brief presentation for us tonight and they are here. Any further introduction needed?
All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jerry Walker and I'm the President of the Traffic Improvement Association. Along with me tonight is Dave Allen, who's one of the two traffic engineers for the Traffic Improvement Association. And you might be familiar with Dave in that he formerly was with the Oakland County Road Commission. And they've done, of course, the Road Commission quite a bit of work in the Ferndale area, as has TIA in the past. So this is the time of year when the TIA, we send out our annual membership dues and so making appearances in front of councils and just talking a little bit about what we do is not uncommon. TIA, we've been partners with the city of Ferndale for a number of years and we offer many services for the community. And a lot of those you may be familiar with when you think back about the narrowing of Nine Mile Road a few years back, in which TIA came in and assisted the city with studies and made recommendations. And eventually that became a reality. You'll also, if you think back in the area of 696, there was a time when there were a lot of through streets going over to the expressway. And I think that created some problems for some of the residential areas. And after a study by our organization, it ended up where a few cul-de-sacs went in, I think, in order to just control the traffic a little bit and maintain the peace and order within those subdivisions. But TIA, we're comprised of traffic engineers, traffic safety specialists, and then public education people. And so our traffic engineers provide a variety of studies. Besides what we've talked about, we also do traffic volume counts, we do traffic flow studies, intersection studies. We help when communities are interested in putting in on-street parking, which in very congested areas or areas where there's a thriving business community, a lot of times parking is an issue. And so you're always looking for new alternatives to parking. So that's something that we assist in. And I think that as time moves forward, that's something that we can assist the city. And we've had discussions with Chief Kitchen and with the DPW Director about that subject. And so we're looking at that. So we do traffic volume counts, speed measurements, traffic sign and signal evaluations, pedestrian crossing, traffic crash analysis, parking, and just a whole sundry of services that we offer to the city. The membership dues for the city of Ferndale are $6,100, which is the exact same that they were last year. And we're here tonight to, I tried to present the report for you in this two-page format and contain some of our fast work we've done with you along with our services that we offer. And we just opened it up if you would have any questions for us specifically.
Thank you. Any questions from the table for our representatives from TIA?
I have some questions. I really appreciate your write-up and thank you for coming out tonight to present to us because I don't think many of us heard what the TIA was. And so, again, thank you for coming. You listed about some examples of the engineering and law enforcement activities that the TIA has provided, and I couldn't ascertain which activities actually happened within the calendar year 2009. So there's a list of activities that happened, in my point of view, over a course of three years. And the reason I interpret it this way is because there was some review and make recommendations regarding the traffic lanes, nearing of the traffic lanes on Nine Mile west of Woodward Avenue. And I think that was done in 2000.
Did that happen over a decade ago?
It was in the 90s.
It was in the 90s. So I'm wondering what services were actually rendered through the TIA to the city of Ferndale in the calendar year 2009 under our membership fees. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. The actual traffic engineer that worked directly with the city and with the police department was Robert Decordi, who's wintering in Arizona right now. But I know Bob Decordi, when he was out here working with the police department, he worked with the DPW and with the police department on some on-street parking issues, as well as working with the schools, in some sign evaluations and some crossing and crosswalk issues. And I know that--
Did he work directly with you?
No. Yeah. So, you know, he had quite a regular dialogue. In fact, while Chief Kitchen was telling me tonight, when I was speaking with him before the meeting, that the traffic officer from the police department has been on the telephone back and forth with Mr. Decordi regarding some traffic flow issues that Bob could look at when he got back. So, you know, to name specific streets that were actually worked on, honestly, I couldn't do that for you tonight. You know, I could provide that. I do know that in the latter part of 2008, the police department was awarded over $7,000 in grants that flowed directly through our office because we control also all of the overtime money that comes from Federal Highway and from the Michigan Department of Transportation for alcohol enforcement and for click-it-or-ticket seatbelt enforcement from the state and the federal government that comes directly into the various communities in Oakland County. And then what we do as an organization, we advocate then for our membered communities to receive those funds.
Okay. And then also, I was wondering if the TIA's mission is going to include anything about bicycling or other modes of transportation other than vehicle assessments? And I was wondering, can you talk a little bit about that?
Certainly. Yeah, so we are all involved with passenger safety or whether they're involved in automobile, whether they're in bicycles, or whether they're in pedestrians. And so we deal a lot with traffic studies as far as vehicle speeds or volumes or the turning radiuses in intersections, crossings for bicycles or pedestrians, and as far as lane widths. And just any factors that has to do with movement of people, whether they're on foot, whether they're on bicycle, whether they're in vehicles. So any of our studies really pertain to bicyclists or pedestrians.
And then what other cities in South Oakland County actually are a member of the TIA? How many?
We have 70 communities in Southeast Michigan and currently every city, with the exception of Pleasant Ridge, is a member.
Okay.
I had a question for you. We have been attempting here for some time to try to get reinstalled some more crosswalks across Woodward Avenue. We've had pedestrians run over and killed on Woodward. Have you folks been involved in any of those efforts or are familiar with those issues?
Obviously read about them in the paper. We have not been contacted, as far as I know, to review any of them.
Oh. How do you get contacted if there's an issue in Ferndale or if somebody wanted something done in Ferndale? How do you get contacted?
Could be the police, DPW, city manager, I mean, a variety of people could contact us.
Okay. But no one in the last couple of years has contacted you about pedestrian deaths on Woodward Avenue?
Not that I'm aware of. Now, Bob Decordi, like Mr. Walker said, Bob Decordi may have worked on it and I'm not aware of it, though.
I believe you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions for the representatives? I have a couple. The monies that you talk about being distributed to the PD for alcohol enforcement, that's in 2008. What were the monies distributed in 2009?
I don't believe that the city of Ferndale received any funds in 2009. And that's due to the fact that the funds, they vary from the state from year to year. And so we try to rotate those around between our membered communities.
Okay. And did Mr. Decordi prepare this report?
No. No, I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, just a number of these issues are rather, a lot of these accomplishments are a bit old. We put in our bicycle lanes, what, about four years ago, four, five years ago? What was the TIA's participation in those projects?
I can't--
Don't know?
Without Mr. Decordi being here, I can't address that.
Okay. All right, well, I guess perhaps we could send some questions to Mr. Decordi, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. On our, in the paperwork then for tonight's meeting and with regards to this presentation, there is from Mr. Fotides, our DPW Director, his request that we approve Ferndale's 2010 membership in the TIA and to charge that fee for this year of $6,100 to the Major Streets Fund. Is there interest in renewing our membership or a motion to that effect? Yes, ma'am?
I would be willing to make a motion to that effect if perhaps we could amend that motion to include a few specific priorities that we have that we would like investigated. Obviously, we've already passed a resolution encouraging MDOT to help us explore the possibility of reinstalling the traffic signal near Withington for a pedestrian crossing. Perhaps part of this discussion is helping our department heads and appointees understand maybe a small list of our priorities for the TIA over the next year.
Is that a--
It's not a motion. It's not a motion, it's a question.
Okay. Well, certainly, anyone at this table can make any motion. You could also, we could table it for further review and putting together some sort of a request. That is also an option. Councilman, did you have something to say? Well, a lot of these projects, it seems as though we pay Giffords and Webster to do a lot of this work. I have a hard time understanding how TIA, well, I guess I have a hard time understanding what TIA did for us in 2009, but more specifically, how we can differentiate TIA from Giffords Webster, our engineer that we paid. And it seems like a lot of these things, if we paid $6,100 to TIA, why were we using Giffords and Webster for a consulting fee? But, I don't know, perhaps that's just the report that was prepared. I don't understand it. Chief, something you'd like to share?
Yes, Your Honor, thanks. These gentlemen, one thing they omitted was their latest project was through Bob Decordi doing the traffic flow on Livernoy that just facilitated the parking removal there. And I think the distinction between these folks and the actual engineers is these people provide the data and the actual physical counts and things so that traffic things can be engineered around what they discover and advise. And the reason that, you know, our interaction with them isn't so obvious is that most of it goes between our traffic control officer and TIA. So it's not a real visible thing, but they work very closely together. And I will tell you that now that he's retiring, we're losing a ton of expertise and someone's going to have to help us out with this stuff. And for $6,100, you're getting a bargain because for us to call in Rich and Associates or someone like that to do a study or, you know, parking feasibility or anything what these folks are really good at, that's a bargain for an annual rate.
Thank you. Chief, did you pass along our concern to the TIA about pedestrian safety and adding crosswalks to Woodward?
You know, Your Honor, that is such an MDOT highway-type thing. I'm sure they'd be happy to review it for us, but, and they're very familiar with MDOT, I'm sure. But that's probably why they weren't consulted right away. I'm sure Byron, his first call was to MDOT since Woodward's an eight-lane MDOT highway. So I'm sure they'd be happy to take a look at it and, you know, should they get the contract, that'll be first on the list, if that's what you want.
Chief, I have a question. From the Livernoy project, it sounded like we did all the work and then there was a call made and then an informal recommendation or that the traffic counts weren't, you know, adequate to, weren't so great as to justify that restraint. Is that sort of the typical process? We just do all the work, we call it in, and they say, you know--
Well, it depends on what the work is. We do the counts. They tell us basically what the state and everyone requires or what their recommendations are in terms of traffic flow and density and things like that. And I can tell you quite frankly that 10 years ago, you would never have been able to remove that parking because the traffic was much different. So actually, our traffic guy does the counts, calls the expert, who happens to be Bob in Arizona at this point, and he runs the numbers and tells us if it's recommended or not. And we don't always end up doing what they recommend. For instance, Nine Mile Bermuda is certainly not TIA's recommendation, it's just, that's the way it is. I mean, but they are consultants and they're very good at what they do.
All right. Again, we have this on our agenda. There is no motion yet on the floor. So there shouldn't be any further debate on the pros and cons of the issue unless we do have a motion.
Well, I have one question in my head is like, well, what are other cities doing that don't belong to the TIA? How are they solving these problems? How are they addressing these issues? And I don't feel like I have an understanding of what other cities are doing in terms of providing or accessing these types of services, whether it's through the TIA or another agency. And based on some of the things that I've heard about what was actually completed in 2009, doesn't give me confidence that we're actually getting our monies worth. Even though it is $6,000, the city is looking at every nook and cranny and every penny. And so I'm just wondering, is there a better way to receive these services? If we do choose to table this and be a little bit more strategic about how we can take advantage of this membership, you know, that's something that we should consider.
Very good. That would be a request for information and I suspect that we don't have anyone at the table right now who could answer that. So again, what we would need now for any further discussion on the pros and cons would be a motion or not. And without a motion, the item dies. It can come back at any time or there can be a motion to table. Just to the gentleman from TIA, I guess we're still on the question-- Certainly. As long as you wish. We've hired a lot of parking consultants, or the DDA has hired parking consultants to determination, to seek to determine the need for parking decks and what the best form of that structure would be. Is that something we should have sent to you guys and had a report prepared?
Typically, in other cities we've done work in, it's close points, they were looking at a parking deck for restoring. And typically what will happen is--
Do you mind, sir, coming? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Just so that we get it on the record.
Sorry about that. Yeah, typically what will happen is a community will get with their consultant or a consultant if they're working for a developer, and then will be asked to review the plans. Some of the issues I can think of down there, part of the traffic was going through an alley, so it was pedestrian crossings in an alley, some of it was sight distance coming over to the parking structure where they had to cross a sidewalk and traffic was entering the road. There are issues like that. Sometimes various consultants, like the parking consultant, their expertise will be in designing that parking structure and then we'll look at it, how that will interact with traffic on the road and that sort of thing.
So you consult with traffic issues related to parking, but not parking itself? Where people are going to enter into the parking deck, where they're going to exit, those types of things?
Right. There could be on-street parking issues. We'll get contacted about potentially removing on-street parking. We've done some work with school districts that are looking at pedestrian, you know, parent drop-off of their kids and they need a better drop-off or they need to have their parking lot redone. So we'll do small, you know, small projects like that, but not, we wouldn't get into, per se, designing a parking structure.
Okay, but I mean, all the parking issues that you get involved with, it's the traffic aspect of the parking, not the parking needs or demands or location and all that type?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And has anyone from the city ever forwarded on to you any of the parking studies that we've had conducted over the last couple of years?
That, and I hate to keep putting on Bob Decordi, but he's probably the one that they would have contacted and I can't tell you. I mean, we can contact him and send you something to tell you what's been done in that regard, but right now I can't answer that question.
Okay. Good questions. All right. Well, I'm not seeing any motions, so I'm going to assume that for now, we're going to let this item die. We are not going to vote to approve the membership for 2010 for now. Perhaps we can bring the subject up again and when our consultant gets back from his winter stay in Arizona, we could talk to him some more. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We have a public hearing on revised zoning ordinance, number 1087.
Thank you. Mr. Brunner, would you or would Mrs. Shear like to introduce this item?
I would like to invite our community development director, Marcia Shear, forward to--
Thank you very much. She is on her way to the podium as we speak.
Good evening. First, I'd like to point out that there are these green cards in the back for anybody who'd like to fill one out instead of speaking publicly. There's also a map in the back and a table of uses, so anyone can reference this as we go through it, okay? City Council updated our master plan in 2008 and in order to implement that master plan, we had to make some updates and amendments to our zoning ordinance, which we have now done. The updated zoning ordinance allows for more mixed use. It permits a greater range of uses. It encourages upper-level residential, addresses alternative energy, and encourages sustainable design. It's in an easy-to-read color format that you can see and reference. The draft ordinance has been reviewed by the city attorney and he has approved it. His concerns have been addressed. So if there's anything else I can help with, let me know.
For now, that's excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Shear. This is the time and place, then, as we noticed, for the public hearing to consider the adoption of revisions to the city of Ferndale zoning ordinance. At this time, anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this subject may do so. We ask that you identify yourselves and stick to a three-minute limit. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Donald Colber. I live at 1856 Pinecrest. I've been happily living in Ferndale for the past 21 years and in that time, I've never had a need to address the city council. If I understand correctly, tonight you will be voting on whether to adopt the new zoning ordinances. I would like to address Area 2 on the proposed draft zoning map. My home and every parcel of property on Pinecrest is currently zoned R1. The proposal would turn the southwest corner of Pinecrest and Withington, my corner is the southeast corner of Pinecrest and Withington, to mixed use 2. This is what I would specifically like to speak on tonight. Rezoning that corner of Pinecrest and Withington from R1 to mixed use 2 would permit, one, a medical, dental, or physical therapy office or a dental lab, a health, fitness, or exercise club or a private club; two, an art, music, dance, craft, ceramic, or cooking school; three, a bank or a credit union; four, a printing, photocopying, or mail packaging service; five, a computer service center; six, an office building; seven, a retail establishment with no outdoor displays or storage; eight, a production facility that has a minimum 20% floor area dedicated to retail sales, production of consumer goods such as food, beverages, art, clothing, textiles, et cetera. With the permit, a banquet hall or assisted living center would also be allowed on that If council allows this currently residential parcel to be rezoned to mixed use 2, then I believe it's only fair to rezone the Grace Gospel Church, the Drayton Avenue Presbyterian Church, both located on Pinecrest, and the St. Luke's Episcopal Church and the Assumption Cathedral Russian Orthodox Church, both located on Livernoy, to be rezoned MXD2 as well. Cathedral Russian Orthodox Church, both located on Livernoy, to be rezoned MXD2 as well. Before you vote, please put yourself in my shoes or in my home, if you will. Would you really want a mixed use 2 property outside your front door? I hope that the suggestion to rezone this corner has nothing to do with the zoning fiasco last year, in which a small number of residents had to sue the zoning board. They lost. A yes vote on rezoning Area 2 means don't fight the city hall, because if you do and you lose, you can expect retribution. I thank you all for listening.
Dan Harto, 548 West Lewiston, Ferndale, Michigan. I also have some concerns on that corner. Can anyone enlighten me what's happening with the proposed, the building where SOS was going to go in there? I haven't seen any, anything happening. It's actually the same as it's been for several months now. And the construction inside, it seems to have just stopped, and I don't see any kind of thing going on. Can anyone help us out on that?
The way the public hearing works, correct me if I'm mistaken, Mr. City Attorney, is that this period of time is when folks in the audience can speak and share any thoughts that they want. It wouldn't be the time for us to answer questions. We can elucidate and talk about some of those issues after the public hearing. Is that accurate?
That's correct, Your Honor. Okay.
So we won't forget your...
Any questions on the...
We won't forget your question. We're just going to finish the process and then come back to it.
Okay. Well, I do see that on the map here, let me first, before I go any farther, thank the zoning board for all their countless hours of work. That must have just been something to go through all of that. But still, on that, that one little section there at First Baptist Church, it's the only little section that pops out off of Nine Mile into, into the residential area. And I think there's a number of residents that are concerned about that. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, Council and Mayor. I applaud the city for making the zoning ordinances much more nimble and modern. I have one criticism or one comment. I would ask that the southern portion of Livernoy, which is now moving towards MXD2, be changed to MXD1, because my main concern, I live at 304 Stratford, which is just next to Livernoy. My main concern is that in the southern part of Livernoy, that auto repair shops and gas stations are going to emerge. There are already a couple of vacant lots that are kind of perfect places for this, and I'm worried about the noise and pollution, not just from cars coming in and out, but just the ever-present sound of auto repair. The southern portion of Livernoy, kind of the neighborhoods abutting it, are in a precarious spot right now. We're faced with foreclosures, in many ways, much worse than other places in Ferndale. And I worry that making Livernoy into MXD2 will kind of sink the neighborhood. So I wonder if we could just move it to MXD1 until, essentially, the economy stabilizes and we see what emerges from Livernoy. Right now, we have a nascent and positive business community that's developing in Livernoy, and I worry that auto shops are going to kill that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is David Kalonowski. I live at 350 Leroy Street. First off, I want to thank Ms. Shear. I sent an email last week. They quickly responded to with some questions I had. I'm concerned my street is going from R1 to R2, as in proposed, which means it's available for two-family homes, duplexes, and so forth. As it stands right now, Leroy Street has parking on both sides of the street. It's very difficult to navigate on any given night as it is. Going to a higher density would exacerbate that problem. So with that, I'm requesting that Leroy be left in the southwest quadrant, be left from R1. And also, I'd like to reconsider going from R2 to R3 in the southwest quadrant, as we already have parking problems as it is in the city. I understand there's parking proposals out there for parking garages and structures and so forth to accommodate the current parking condition that we have. By increasing the density, I mean, the parking problem's going to get even worse. And I understand the proposals that are on the table don't even meet the need that we have currently, not including the future needs with this new zoning proposal. So that being said, again, I'd like to request that we reconsider the R2 to R3 on, I think, Saratoga and Troy Street, and then the R2 to R1, excuse me, R1 to R2 on Leroy Street. Thank you.
Any others wish to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing and find out if perhaps we could just get a few more comments shared by either Ms. Shear and... Did you want to address some as well?
I'll let Marsha go first, but I can absolutely...
Very good. Marsha, I just made a few notes here. The first question had to do with, I think it was the southwest corner of Withington and Pinecrest?
Southwest corner of Withington and Pinecrest.
I'm guessing that's where the church is?
That would be the property that is currently the First Baptist Church. We heard the concerns during the public hearing at the planning commission. There were concerns about accessing any business off of Withington, and we took a step of incorporating into the MXD that any development would have to front on a major or minor arterial road, which means it would have to front on Nine Mile Road and not on Pinecrest or Withington. Okay? So it would have to be moved to the, to the front of Nine Mile Road. Yes, those uses are permitted, as he outlined. The idea is to broaden the uses that are permitted on West Nine Mile. It is now an area of rental, single-family houses, and it's underutilized. It's, as much as people say it may be residential in nature, it has a commercial flavor to it. It has a lot of traffic along it. It abuts the commercial area in Oak Park, and the planning commission felt that we would have a better, better development by changing it to mixed use. Single-family and multifamily residential are still permitted uses and can remain. That's the idea of mixed use, that there will still be a wide range of development in that area.
Please.
The item that, or the, I guess, geographic component that is particularly challenging about this site is that it's kind of an L-shaped lot, and it curves around Payless Shoes. The intent of the planning commission and of the zoning update is to allow greater development along Nine Mile. It's, my hope that by making the change that Marsha just referred to, to require that business frontage be sited along the, essentially, the busiest road that any address abuts, it will address concerns about this particular pass-through lot. There are very few lots like this in the city. It's unfortunately not, I shouldn't say it's not generally done, but it doesn't generally hold up if you try to zone everything around one particular parcel in one way and leave something else another way. It's something called spot zoning, and it can generally be challenged legally. So it was, it was a hard decision, but I think the planning commission made the right decision by trying to keep Nine Mile more commercial or dense residential in nature.
Thank you kindly. And that's currently where the church is?
The church and the Payless.
Ferndale Baptist Church and Payless Shoes.
Parking that curves around the Payless.
Thank you. The next question we really should address during call to audience, there was a question from the gentleman having to do with SOS. I'm not aware of any activity that has occurred, but we could get an update, unless anyone objects. Do you have a 30-second update on SOS?
No.
There's been no activity whatsoever. Permits pulled?
No.
Nothing. So that's why you haven't seen any activity. There hasn't been any. The third item that I wrote down was, I think, Troy and Saratoga going from R2 to R3?
No, first, I believe we were talking about South Livernoy.
Thank you, I'm sorry. South Livernoy going to mixed use from mixed 1 to mixed 2?
Right. I think Mr. Regis' major concern were automotive-related, and I, automotive-related uses are special land uses. They are not uses permitted by right. So someone can't just come in there and make a, an auto-related facility without going through both the requirements of planning commission and city council and the conditions that would then be applied in terms of hours of operation and noise controls and screening, landscaping. You know, a number of conditions can be applied to a, to a, to a special land use. So I think that should allay some of his concerns. Other than that, there are a few differences between mixed 1 and mixed 2. Mixed 1 is slightly less dense or, you know, less intense, but we feel, again, that this would be the proper use of this property, you know, these parcels to encourage development in that area.
But a car repair shop or a gas station could not just automatically move in?
No.
We went through this recently when we reviewed the special land use for the mobile gas station on Woodward. They were not in compliance in several areas, and they were brought into compliance...
Right.
...through a review at the planning commission and the city council. One of the other things that the planning commission talked about is that there are currently two auto-related uses, one at the corner of Livernoy and Eight Mile, and one at the corner of Livernoy and Marshall. And if we made these non-conforming by not permitting them, it would essentially discourage these business owners from putting any money into their business. You wouldn't be able to, you know, to fix it up and then use it in the way in which it currently is. So it was a balancing act, again, in order to not encourage it to deteriorate, we thought it best to incorporate it with these special set of rules.
Makes sense. The last question had to do with Troy and Saratoga and going to hire R numbers?
If you do look at the copy of the map that you have, you will see that the other three quadrants of the city already have R3 zoning and R2 zoning stepping down into the R1 zoning of the neighborhood. For some reason, that southwest quadrant had not been zoned in that manner. The planning commission did consider this, and again, in order to increase density in the downtown area, felt that it would be far more equitable if that area were also zoned. Now, I do hear the gentleman's concerns about parking. Development that occurs will have to be required to provide parking off the street. So that should allay some of the fears that he has.
Should allay a lot of the fears, sure. Go ahead.
And I think we would also hope part of the, the value system that went into creating this, well, the master plan first and then the zoning ordinance update had to do with walkability. And you and I live close to the downtown, Mayor, and, you know, I know you walk a lot of places, particularly in the evenings. Our hope is that...
Daytime, too.
But you work further than the downtown. This is not...
I've planned.
My point is not anything about your evening behavior. The, the hope is that we won't all be two, three, and four-car families forever. As gas prices go up, people will be interested in living closer to where they work and where their, their after-work activities are. So hopefully, in these denser areas near the downtown, you may just have one car and commute via some type of public transportation or even walk to work.
So the idea is always that denser population areas and denser living areas are near the downtown?
Absolutely.
Further away becomes less dense?
Absolutely.
And any development, anyone that wanted to put in a triple or a duplex or a little apartment has to provide new parking on its own property?
Yes.
Correct. I believe those were the questions that were addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any requests for information from those at the table here? The public hearing was held. Is there action to be taken then tonight?
I would very much like to make this motion, if I can just get it to... Here we go. This was really a labor of love by the planning commission over the last year and a half without outside consultants, a fantastic group who have a lot of expertise at this table in the planning commission. I would move that after a public hearing was held on March 8th, 2010, Ferndale City Council adopts ordinance number 1087, the City of Ferndale zoning ordinance, and directs the city clerk to publish notice thereof.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded, Baker Piana. Discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you to our planning commission as well. Zoning ordinances, rewrites, and updates take over a year to do. I work with other cities, helping guide them, at least what some of the issues are in their zoning ordinance. And I believe our planning commission saved the city approximately $30,000 in types of consultant work that usually other cities have to contract out. So we have a very professionally, a professional volunteer staff on the planning commission. So I want to thank each and every one of them, and you, Ms. Baker, about your hard work in doing this, and also the CDS department. The zoning ordinance is easier to read. There's a, a lot of the old legalese is out of there. It's easier to find items. Things are in color, and I think it's just easier to interpret. Zoning ordinances and regulations are very difficult and even boring to read, and it's hard to visualize what you're trying to build in your head as you read the zoning ordinance. And I think this takes us one step further to having form-based codes, which is something I envision for the city having in the future. So one last thing, zoning regulations historically have been about what you are not allowed to do. This zoning ordinance is taking further steps about allowing, making statements about what you are allowed to do. And it's a very different philosophy and approach in terms of your regulations, and I, I just say kudos, kudos, kudos.
I agree. Thank you, Councilwoman. I agree. It's a great document, a lot of hard work. I think you proved that zoning can be fun.
Zoning is fun.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Covey?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item.
Call to audience, Your Honor.
This is the time of the council meeting. It lasts for 30 minutes, so it's 20 after, so we can go at no further than 10 till the hour. We ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes or less, that you share your name and address, or at least where, what city you are from, address in the back if you wish to remain not have it public, and that you honor the integrity of the meeting and do not participate in any personal attacks. Ms. Shear, did I not finish with you?
No, I have something else. The census is coming. The census forms will hit your mailbox in the next 10 days. Remember, it's due April 15. This map shows city's participation in 2000. Every census track was higher than the national average of 72 and Michigan average of 76. I hope you give yourself a pause, yes. The lowest participation was 77%. The highest was a whopping 89% participation. We actually have a way to track while you're filling this out and submitting it what the percentage is. So we're going to keep an eye on this and hopefully encourage everyone to participate and get the highest participation we can. We'll put that link on our website, so everybody can watch how well we're doing. The stakes are high. An accurate count of the local population helps to ensure our constituents receive our fair share of federal funding. The funding includes healthcare, education, and roads. 10 minutes, 10 easy questions. Please participate.
Thank you, Ms. Shear. And while we're on that subject, Olshah, which is just across the street here from City Hall on Nine Mile, next to the court, will be having a census worker on-site to help people who are unable to complete their census forms, for whatever reason. The census worker will be at Olshah from March 19th through April 19th for those folks who need help with those 10 questions. We are in the public. Call to audience.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rich Long. I live at 262 West Troy. On the evening of Saturday, February 20th, throughout Sunday, February 21st, we, in the City of Ferndale, got 67 inches of snow. Early Monday morning at 5:30 a.m., I got a ticket for parking across from my residential building at 262 West Troy. The ticket was for parking during snow emergency. I'd like to know what are we supposed to do if we don't have a driveway, if we don't have a garage? A lot of residents, not only apartment dwellers, but a lot of residents living on streets like... not only apartment dwellers, but a lot of residents living on streets like Camborn and Breckenridge do not have garages. Um, I want to know what I'm supposed to do. I mean, if I was a magician and could make my car disappear, I'd do it. If I could put it across Eight Mile without it getting stripped, I'd do it. I'm taking a day off work. I'm a contractor. I gotta go, go to court, explain this. This shouldn't be happening. Um, you know, I just want an answer, like what can we do?
It's a good question. I'll, I'll go to the city manager. But first, didn't, you have come before us before and I understand your plight because you live downtown. But didn't you, don't you, I thought you told us you paid for parking in a lot, long-term parking?
We do. We do. Um, those of us who paid for the parking got tickets as well.
You were in the long-term lot?
Yeah, yeah. The ticket, the ticket is for parking during snow emergency. Um, everyone knows not to be on the street. There's also signs in the West Troy lot and I believe all of the other municipal lots also saying, you know, "Snow emergency, two inches of snow or more, stay out of the lot." So, a-again, there's a lot of residents here that don't have a place to put your car.
I, I don't know the answer. The ordinance requires you to go to east or west Breckenridge lot.
And there's also, I mean, I can let the city manager answer, but there, there are also, um, I believe, permit parking provisions for people on the streets like Bester or, um, East Breckenridge that do not have driveways. Um, but here comes Byron to answer the question.
All right. So the answer would be to go to Breckenridge then? We're gonna get an answer right now.
DPDW directors got the-
Another answer for you, sir. It's a good question.
Residents who do not have a driveway, um, are allowed, and, and who are handicapped, are allowed to get no more than two permits from the city, which they can put on their driver's side of their rear window, their vehicle. And they can park during a snow emergency on street. Uh, those residents, um, who live in apartment buildings, um, and who have permits and they, they do park in our parking lots, then if we get two or more inches of snow, they're asked to, uh, uh, take their vehicles to, um, either the east or west Breckenridge lots when we plow between three and seven AM, because that's the only time we can do the parking lots. Um, so if, to, um, in short, if, if you are a resident, you can call the DPW at, um, um, five four, uh, five four six, uh, twenty-five, uh, fourteen. Um, and we have a list. We have a list of, of all the houses in the city of Ferndale, all the properties that do not have driveway approaches. And the permit's good. It, you don't have to renew it every year or anything like that. You, you receive it and, uh, you know, you come in and you live on Goodrich or whatever street and yes, we, we know you don't have a driveway approach and we have a record of whether a permit has been issued before. So-
And that permit allows you to park in east or west Breckenridge lot?
Well, only for those who have parking permits. I mean, you have people who live in the apartment buildings downtown.
Right.
Or you have, uh, businesses that have, um, catering trucks. You know, some of the restaurants have catering trucks and they have nowhere else to park them but in the municipal parking lots, which we allow. But between, uh, three and seven AM, if you have two or more inches of snow, we have to get in there, usually around three-thirty, four o'clock. We, we get in there and we want to get done by seven AM. We ask that you take your vehicle to either the east or the west Breckenridge lot. And when you do get a permit from the, when you do get your parking permit from the treasurer's office, there is a letter saying that.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Byron.
I just wanted to add, I, I did not get that letter and I've been getting parking passes for a few years. I wish the city would do a better job, or DPW, whoever's responsibility, you know, that is. I understand that the police are doing their job and they're doing what you told them to do. But, uh, like I said, I'm going to court and I just want to know, you know, it sounds like I have an answer now, but it's a little late.
Well, the judge may go real easy on you. We'll hope so. Um, and I'm sure the clerk can help make sure that the treasurer's office has the documents that go with the parking ticket, de, uh, decals to remind folks of where they can park. Yes, sir. Dennis?
Good evening, Mayor Covey, State Council. My name is Dennis, excuse me. My name is Dennis Hapner. I live at seven six six Flawedale. At the February twenty-second council meeting, Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Director Julie Hall told the council that we now have a pool table at the swimming center for the senior. Well, that same room is also a room for the seniors. From nine AM to three PM, Monday through Friday, that room is available for the seniors, not, not, uh, teens. They're, they're not allowed until three o'clock. Uh, we, I have, in that room, we have a ping pong table, um, air hockey, and now we have a pool table. So you seniors out there, bring your friend and some to the swimming center for some real old-fashioned fun. There is no charge for this game room. Also, we have room for another pool table. So if anyone out there that has one, they'd like to donate to the swimming center, call two four eight, five four four, six seven, six seven. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dennis. I thought you were gonna complain, but you're happy about the pool table. Very good. That's great. Yes, sir?
I don't know if I can beat the pool table. Uh, hello, Mayor Covey and members of council. Uh, Douglas Christie, Ferndale resident and, uh, Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission member. And I am here to announce that the quest for Ferndale's greenest business of two thousand and ten is about to begin. Uh, past recipients include Woodward Ave Brewers in two thousand and eight and affirmations last year. Uh, this year, with the help of Sierra Club Cool Cities Program, we will be conducting a survey of local businesses. The survey will look at companies' policies on waste, energy, water, conservation, purchasing and more, and the awards will be presented in front of council on the twelfth of, of April. Uh, and to thank the businesses and the volunteers that take part in the survey, the FESC and the Sierra Club will host a special celebration on the fortieth anniversary of Earth Day, which is April twenty-second. This event will be open to the public and will take place at the Loving Touch Pool Hall over on Woodward. Now, before we can celebrate, we have to conduct the survey. So we're looking for some volunteers that can help out, uh, that are interested in the greening of Ferndale and again, helping the Sierra Club and the commission. Uh, we're having a special meeting this Wednesday, the tw- uh, tenth, at the Collet Community Center at seven PM. Uh, so again, we're asking for volunteers to help out and just to talk about the greening of Ferndale. Further information can be found on the FESC's blog, which is www.fesc-freeforums.org, or you can contact Michelle from the Sierra Club office at two four eight, five four nine, six two one three. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Christie. So Earth Day is April twenty-second?
Yes, and that will be, of course, during the Ferndale Green Week celebration, which will include the veg fest again and all of, some of the stuff we did last year, which we'll talk about at the next meeting.
And Arbor Day is in there somewhere, isn't it?
Yeah, it's gonna follow the next week, I believe, because that, that stays consistent with a, with a, I think the fourth. The DPW would know, but I believe that's the next Friday. Yeah, so we'll tie it together.
Madam Clerk, if you could mark the April twelfth council meeting, we'll have a presentation then from the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission?
Do that.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Earl Sparkman, three three four one Grayson. I see obviously that we're still working on our budgetary problems. I recognize the tremendous task that you have before you. As a longtime resident, I'd like to again, express my concern that two of the most vital, important things the city does for me is our police and fire. I think that it would be very important to find out just how much help you could get from citizens in its resolution of this problem by asking for perhaps a, an increase in mileage. I certainly would do that. And I'm just encouraging you to do that. It was, I think, two meetings ago, so please don't destroy our police and fire. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I was handed a question about should we limit our talks, uh, about the budget to the budget on the agenda? And really, it's half a dozen to one. I mean, this is the call to audience. When we get to the budget discussion-
Comes next.
-there could also be folks speak on it. Um, it does come next.
The only item on the agenda for consideration regarding the budget tonight is the adoption of a schedule and a public hearing. So unless someone wants to debate when we hold the meetings, um, we might as well get the comments out of the way now.
You are right. I, and, uh, Councilmember Baker, thanks for bringing this up, but I think, I think that is correct, that tonight, when we discuss the budget, it isn't to discuss the budget, it's simply the scheduling. So we are appropriate now to be talking about budget stuff. Ms. Twist, right?
Yes, hello. Um, my name's Angela Twist. I live at three three one East Webster. Um, I first want to thank you for all your hard work. I know this is a very hard task. I know that you do have our best interests at heart. Mr. Galloway, I wanted to thank you specifically for your shared revenue presentation that you shared with us last week. It was very informative to me. And I, um, encourage you to continue, um, sharing that and giving the name and number of people we can contact in Lansing, because I think that's very important. I also want to talk to my residents here and encourage them to become more active. It, you know, we need to work with city council and, um, become educated as to where the money's coming from and how it's being spent. I know myself, I wasn't educated and through your education, I'm having my eyes opened a bit. Um, one suggestion that was given to me was, um, one of the reasons why our, um, revenue is decreasing is the estimated taxable value of our houses are being decreased, which is giving the city less money. Um, one suggestion was for us homeowners to donate the difference in our taxes. And I, I think that that is something that we all should be doing and be doing soon, so that you can use that in our upcoming budget. Um, with that being said, I looked on the agenda and saw, um, the budget presentation, and I do have some concerns, especially of the reduction of our patrolmen. I saw that, um, you're proposing six patrolmen be cut, two from each, um, shift. And I'm wondering how many there are per shift? Do you know?
Depends on the shift.
You know, we may not, you know, we don't normally always address every question that's asked during called audience. We, we can. It's, it's your conclusion. Remember that these, this, these presentations and these, these concepts coming from the city manager are simply the starting place.
Okay.
They're not recommendations at all. As a matter of fact, I don't assume that we're gonna adopt a lot of those because it all depends on how the wage or, uh, labor negotiations and retirements come along first. So, but it's a good question.
I, I just, that was very concerning to me. And again, you bring up the concessions. Um, while I know concessions are important being a, um, I do want to remind you that these are people that work very hard for, for us and deserve a good wage. And I don't want a lot of concessions being given to them either. I don't think that that's necessarily fair. And my very last comment is, um, on the item that I read, um, you were comparing our city to other cities of the same size. And those cities, which I won't mention, but I certainly hope that's not our vision for Ferndale, um, because the cities that were being mentioned, I know that our, our police department provides much better protection for our citizens than what I was being seen in those cities. And so that concerned me. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kevin Kelly and I'm an Oak Park resident for the last twenty-two years.
And my name is Dan Silverstein and I am a resident of Berkeley.
Uh, this is, this may be within the current framework that, of discussion that you guys are, are conducting right now. I'm doing a feasibility study on a business that, uh, Dan and myself and a couple of other of our associates will be establishing in the next three to six months. The business is growing medical marijuana. And I'm doing part of the feasibility study that I'm performing is to determine the best location, uh, in this southern, uh, South Oakland County area. Uh, being a resident of Oak Park, I have, uh, talked with the city planner at the Oak Park, um, government and, uh, was told initially that that's not something that they're looking to do at the present time. But with the ambiguity of the, uh, Michigan Marijuana, uh, Medical Marijuana Act, there's a lot of room for interpretation. And I'm just trying to get some type of information from the council and the mayor himself, uh, just to see whether it's feasible to even consider Oak Park or Ferndale as two of those venues to establish a business in. Uh, being overly compliant, of course, would be something that the business, our business, would be particularly sensitive to in terms of, of location, uh, next to schools or to other retail businesses, that kind of thing. But I'm still looking at it, uh, from a feasibility standpoint, maybe in an industrial area. And, um, that's basically the, uh, information I want to give you guys for a response, either tonight or at a later date.
And, uh, looking to work with, uh, civil authorities too. I want to be on a handshaking basis with everybody.
Sure. Well, I give you credit for your courage, because you picked a great night to come and talk about that. You're in a, you're in a room full of police officers, I think. Seriously, um, I would refer you to, to speak with our city manager and our city attorney, as well as our, uh, CDS director who's in the back. The city of Ferndale has elected not to place, at this point, any, uh, zoning restrictions on that issue. It is a complicated issue, the way the state passed the ordinances. Um, I do know that Hazel Park is, is actually encouraging and looking at ways that they can facilitate, um, that issue. Um, you're the first who's come to us officially. And again, I would ask that you, uh, speak to the city, uh, manager to see if he has any direction for you. Our police chief is here as well. Um, but certainly complying with the rules and the laws as they are. Um, we appreciate your openness and honesty coming to speak to us.
And I thank you very much, Mayor. We, we plan on being open. That's the whole nature of establishing something like this. I think you need to be a model for anything that you're gonna try to do that's new with new laws. And it's our intention on, on providing, uh, a two-way cooperation in that, in that venue. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I've been, uh, resident of Ferndale for thirty years. I raised my kids here, sent them to school. And, uh, I lived in Detroit before I lived in Ferndale. And the police department in Detroit wasn't very good, I'll tell you. You'd call them if my house was broken into, they'd show up three days later. Well, and a lot of crime went on, gangs moved in, drugs. When I moved to Ferndale, I felt safe with my kids playing out in front of them, you know, in the park in front of the house. Sent them to school and they'd walk to Ferndale School and everybody was, everything was great, pleasant bill. And, uh, I know we have problems with the budget, but I think laying off the police force or the fire department is causing a bigger problem than what we have at, with the budget. And I think, I'm not the only one that feels this way. I think of a lot of people in Ferndale, because when I go to the store and I'm on the street, I talk to people. And the last thing they want to see is something happened to the police force or the fire department. And, uh, I'm just here to hope that you find another, other avenues to go to, because I think laying off is just a way of running from certain problems instead of finding other avenues. Don't hurt, hurt the budget or the city trying to solve one thing and making it probably even a little worse. And that's why I say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Matt Nowatzek. I live on two two six East Oak Ridge. First off, I'd like to applaud Mr. Brunner and the council for tackling the hard issues facing the city. Specifically, Mr. Brunner, your article in Ferndale Friends with regards to fund balance accounting, governmental accounting, with the, you know, what the heck modified accrual accounting is. Uh, I myself am a CPA, um, so I understand it, but I think it did a nice job of explaining it to the community. Um, you know, with regards to issues, I just want to speak about, firstly, we have an operating deficit. There's no easy choices. There's no way around it. Either we increase revenues or we cut expenditures. Um, we've seen recently in other surrounding communities that people don't want taxes increased. I myself don't. Um, I say this with regards to the fact that as, as someone in the private industry, my frozen, or my salary has been frozen now for two years. I've had to make hard choices with regards to my expenditures. Uh, you know, myself, I'm still trying to save for retirement. I'm trying to do everything that I can to the best of my ability. I ask that the city operate just like I am. I think that's fair and I think that's just. Secondly, I, I want to ask our community, what are we so scared of? Uh, we seem to be, um, you know, we seem to be placating and, and falling into fear versus looking forward and doing our best with what we can do. Um, I think that's really all you can ask of ourselves and of our city government is do the best with what we can. And so I want to just thank you guys for actually- And so I want to just thank you guys for actually, you know, handling this issue and looking at it in a pragmatic view. Thank you.
Hey, Watson, 3209 Edman. I have one question while we're talking about the budget and increasing taxes possibly. A few years ago, we had a very good rainy day fund. Where is it?
It's bigger now than it ever has been. Yeah, we got it. It's big. Four, four million, roughly.
And what's that to be allocated for?
Rainy days.
And what do you call rainy days? Perks?
I'd call it today. It's raining.
It should be included before we start scaring everybody into getting rid of our police and fire. And I have a question that maybe somebody can answer for me. City council's off the hook here. People are losing their homes. They're talking today how they've walked away, that now they owe more than their home's worth. If the market readjusted itself for the true value of property, how come the mortgages weren't readjusted? Because people then maybe could have stayed in their homes, so this is kind of a two-edged sword. Your house is worth nothing, but it was financed at a higher rate, so then the mortgage isn't right. Who deals with that?
Banks.
The banks.
The people are being fleeced, and they need to yell.
Good questions, Ms. Watson. Thank you. And we're not, no one wants to get rid of police and fire. Everyone, I think everyone knows that. We don't want to. We're not going to get rid of police and fire. Yes, sir?
That's Augustin, 1550 Spencer. It's kind of hard to get up here and not talk about a budget or anything like that when you, the city council, is actually the ones that, you know, come up here and say, well, we got to do this, we got to cut these people, we got to cut that people. Try to save a few people, you know, but when you're, you know, like the police, the fire, DPW, you name it, when you talk about the budget, you know, every aspect of it comes up. Now, I feel pretty safe here, living in the city. I've been doing it for 30 years myself, or 29, to be exact, and that, and I tell you what, I wouldn't trade it for a lot of other places. And some of them are pretty good neighborhoods further north, you know, of Eight Mile, and that, but I mean, you know, our, our police and our fire do a pretty darn good job, you know, they're there when we need them. You don't have to wait, like that one guy said, you know, and he waits three days in Detroit, and that, you know, and we got a pretty good department here, and I'd like to keep it that way, you know? And I mean, especially when some of these people that are on the police and fire grew up here, went to school here. There's nobody that knows this city better than they do, you know? So, I mean, I'd like to see these guys stay intact. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Michelle Walker. I'm a business owner in Ferndale. I've been in this city for 19 years now. I can say that I can rest assured that my employees are safe. I feel safe here. The police have an awesome response time. The one thing is the visibility of the police. There's enough police officers right now where in almost any intersection, you're going to see a police car every two to four minutes. I believe that is your biggest deterrent of the crime rate. Other cities you can compare in size. We live in one. It's about the same size. They have less police. They also have triple the crime rate. I can honestly say that I wouldn't want to have a business in that city, because I don't ever want to go to bed at night and find out that my employee was murdered in the middle of the night. That is the worst fear that I have as a business owner. We're open 24 hours a day. Women can come in my store, use the ATM at 3:00 in the morning, and feel safe. They're not using the banks in a dark lot. And I think if they made a cut in that city, in this city, that it would be a mistake. It would be a deterrent from people to want to move here, to want to do business here. I can honestly say that compared to other businesses like mine, that if I tell stories of crime, Ferndale has the biggest deterrent of crime. It's not so much as catching them after they're done. They do have the fastest response time in the state of Michigan, though. But it's a deterrent, a deterrent. If you have a 67-year-old grandmother who's living in the city, she can feel safe to walk outside of her door. She's not going to get carjacked. There is isolated incidents that happen in every city. I'm not going to say it's stopped altogether. Somebody is not going to seek out in Ferndale to commit crime. I believe that they're going to try to avoid. I know for a fact that the only times anything has happened in our store, it's been out of desperation or stupidity. And, yeah, 98% of the time, they've been caught.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Walker. 803 Nine Mile Off 10711. I've been to all the other meetings where you guys were talking about cutting the police and the fire, but I was also at the previous meeting before that, and you guys also said that the police were the highest revenue to bring in for the city. Now, wouldn't it kind of like cut your own throat to take away partial of the highest revenue that you guys have coming in?
It's a good question.
That's not accurate, first of all.
It was at your, it was at your guys' meeting. You guys said it yourself, it was the highest income for the building department and so forth.
Highest expenditure. It's not the highest.
All right, well, I've got 29 slides about revenues and expenditures to come, so maybe you'd like to...
I was here outside your guys' mouth, not mine. I'm just asking you guys, because you guys said it was the biggest revenue, the biggest income for the city, so that kind of don't make no sense to cut your own throat.
Property taxes.
Yeah. Well, after property taxes and state revenue, then, would come the court and the fire department, where most income comes from.
Well, we already know we're losing the property taxes coming down, so why are we going to take away the police department also? Let alone you guys, we sat here and watched you guys give all these awards to the fire department, to the police department, to let them go? I don't, it really don't make no sense.
You're right.
There's got to be some other way we can find something.
That's not accurate, and we're going to go through that presentation in a moment, so...
Okay, I just know, I mean, it's been supposed to been, last time you guys said it would be discussed in March. Nothing's been said except from the public to do with the, with the government agencies themselves.
It's coming, and as a matter of fact, at 10 till, we have to end the public portion of the called audience, so we only have one minute left. Do you want that minute, or do we want to let one more person talk?
You can have it, it's due on...
All right, sir. There's one more. You got, I'm afraid you only have a minute and a half.
Then I'll skip looking for gum under the podium here. Thomas Gagne, 360 West Woodland. Quickly, I'd like to thank Mr. Brunner for making his recommendations and putting those out, so people can see the numbers and what might, what could be happening. So far, and I have spoken with Mr. Brunner and other folks, and the discussions between Ferndale and other neighboring cities so far have seemed to have been on the administrative level. Administrators talking to other administrators, trying to figure out where cost savings can be in interlocal governments. One of the things I think is missing is making it a political issue. This morning, in the newspaper Sterling Heights is laying off fire people, Royal Oak on the news this afternoon. They're looking at laying off folks. It seems to me that our city council people, you guys ran for the position, you want the desk there, you need to be out in front of these people politically. You know, start putting political pressure on these folks to deal with the issues before they're, as they're making cuts, to say, hey, listen, we need to work together before the state of Michigan does it to us. Put the political pressure on them and help out the city managers, deal with their issue at the administrative level. You guys need to step up. It's one thing to go there and announce various things, candidacies and whatnot. What I'd rather have you do is sit there and talk about dealing with the budget issues that are creaming this region. That's why I want you out there talking about. That's the political pressure you need to do. Thank you very much, and good luck in the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Gagne. And as you know, Councilman Galloway has been talking very vociferously about lobbying our state representatives, and when I went to Hazel Park, I spoke frankly with the mayor and the city council members about fire sharing services. So, we are actively, actively doing that, and we'll keep doing that. That concludes the public portion of the call to audience. I would encourage those interested in the budget and possible cuts to the budget to stay and learn and figure out what we're going to be up against. Ms., Ms. Clerk, if you would, tell us what's next on the agenda.
We are to the consent agenda, your honor. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 22nd and the special meeting of February 25th. B, approval to direct the city attorney to research snow removal enforcement options and provide a report by Monday, April 12th.
May I?
May I?
Councilwoman Piana stepped away, and we can't have you leave at this time.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, I, as did I.
Need three.
C, approval of license agreement between City of Ferndale and Ferndale Good Times Food and Drink, Inc., doing business as Rosio Grates for temporary use of public property. D, approval of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Contract Amendment Number Two with Home Renewal Systems LLC. E, approval of the emergency purchase of $5,105 in repair parts from Schultz Equipment, Inc., for the city's root snow plows, and to charge the expense to vehicle and equipment fund, repair and maintenance, account number 661-000-775. F, approval to receive and adopt the City of Ferndale Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2011 through 2020. And, Item G, approval of the bills and payrolls certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to review by the council finance committee.
Thank you. Well done, Madam Clerk. Which items would folks like to pull for further discussion? I would like to pull Item F, as in Frank, for a few questions or discussion. Is there a motion to adopt Items A through G less F?
So moved.
Galloway moves, second by Baker. Madam Clerk?
You guys are so far ahead of me. That was Galloway-Baker?
Yes, ma'am.
Give me one minute. Councilmembers, Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Piana?
Adopting agenda consent.
And Mayor Cabbie.
Yes, a unanimous vote to adopt the consent agenda less Item F. Madam Clerk, next item.
Regular agenda, Item A, introduction of the fiscal year ending 2011 budget.
Mr. Brunner, would you introduce?
Thanks, your honor. The city charter requires the finance director to submit to the council a budget for the ensuing year at the first meeting in April. However, this year, the city is starting the budgeting process a month early in order to deal with the unprecedented decreases in revenues, as well as some pretty challenging increases in expenditures. We've gone through a process of collecting budget requests from the department heads in the normal fashion, and what we've come up with is a fiscal year ending 2011 budget that is $3.1 million out of balance, which is to say that expenditures requested exceed estimated revenues. Last year, following last year's budget process, the council adopted a policy that makes the city manager responsible for preparing a balanced budget, which is why I've prepared a set of recommendations for balancing that budget. As point has been made, none of us up here wants to implement that plan, and we're already working very hard with the city's labor unions to avoid implementing that, that plan. So tonight, what I'd like to do is start out by giving an overview of the city's general fund budget, and then the council can adopt the budget meeting schedule and schedule the public hearing on the budget on April 26, 2010. So, start off with, go ahead, Jamie. The, the general fund budget includes central services, the city attorney, city clerk, folks you see up here, most of what goes on in city hall, the district court across the street, the fire department, the police department, and only a very small portion of the public works department, 2.25 full-time equivalents. Most of the public works department is in the water and sewer fund, major and local streets fund. General fund also includes the recreation department and the Woodward Dream Cruise. The other funds are special revenue funds, such as the library fund, the sanitation fund, major and local street funds, and those revenues cannot be used for general fund expenditures. Those revenues must be expended on the purposes for which they're legally designated. We have a debt service fund, which is how we pay for the voter-approved infrastructure bonds. We have enterprise funds, the auto parking fund and the water and sewer fund, where the money that we collect in fees and revenues pays for the expenditures, as well as the internal service funds, which are where we account for expenses like vehicles, equipment, and workers' compensation, and then those expenses are allocated to the city's other funds. So this pie chart shows you general, not general fund revenue, all funds, revenue by all funds. I know you probably can't read it from the back, so I'll tell you that the big blue portion is the general fund. That's the city's largest fund. It's 42% of the city government overall. The red section on the bottom is the water and sewer fund. That's $10 million, or about 25% of the city's operations. The green slice is the debt service fund. That's $3.5 million that goes directly to paying the bonds for the voter-approved infrastructure improvements. Sanitation is the purple slice, $2.5 million, that pays for things like your trash collection. Major and local streets fund is the smaller lighter blue section, about 6%, and then all other funds combined are about $5.2 million, 13%. So, it's important to understand that all the red, the green, the purple, the light blue, and the orange can't be used to spend for the activities that are in the blue section, which is the general fund. General fund revenue history looks like a roller coaster. 2002 peaked at 17.4 million, had a million-dollar drop into '03, where it leveled off for a year, and then kind of slowly climbed up to a 19.5 million-dollar peak in 2009. We are now headed over the edge into a drop which is unprecedented in the history of the city government, and which we'll talk about in a little bit further detail. Next two pies show general fund revenue last year, in fiscal year that ended on June 30, 2009. That's the last year that is over and done with, and has been audited, and we know what we actually spent. There you see property taxes were about $9.2 million, making up 47% of the budget. If you look at fiscal year ending 2011, property taxes become a bigger portion of the pie, but they're actually going down. They're projected to be $8.5 million. Now, these two pies should actually be, the 2011 one should be smaller than the 2009 one, because our revenues are shrinking. But you see here that property taxes make up the largest portion of the revenue, and since it was brought up earlier, I'll mention that the city spent more on providing police and fire services in the fiscal year that ended 2009 than it collected in property Now, what's changed to reduce revenues in, in the way that's projected? Well, government, general government revenue is, is down $1 million over the course of about two years. State shared revenue is down $900,000, and property taxes are down $700,000. So, those are the three major things that we're going to focus on in this presentation. So, why is, why is general revenue down? It, it comes down to miscellaneous income. This is basically a catch-all, where revenue that doesn't fit anywhere else is, is accounted for. In the fiscal year that ended 2009, this number was $614,000, which is, I think, the largest that it's ever been, and that's due in large part to a refund from the city's liability and property insurance carrier. They collect money from the city over the years and had collected so much from its members that they gave a refund. And unrealized investment gains, which isn't actually cash, it's just the value of investments that the city holds in the fiscal year that we're currently in, that will end on June 30th. There is the potential for another refund from the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, and then in the next fiscal year, we've budgeted $20,000, because that is the low end of the normal range, and these are revenues that, that can't be counted on. General fund property taxes are the largest source of general fund revenue. They peaked in the fiscal year that ended 2009 at $9.2 million. Basically leveled off, slight drop between last year and the current year, and next year, we begin the descent into freefall. The amount of property tax revenues that the general fund will collect next year will be less than the city collected in the fiscal year that ended in 2007. This shows our property tax history. Over the course of the last 10 years, property taxes have climbed at about an average... Over the course of the last 10 years, property taxes have climbed at about an average rate of 3.3% a year. Folks should know that Proposal A of 1994 caps the city's property tax revenue increase at the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less. And so, over the course of those years, it's averaged a 3.3% increase. As I mentioned, it's leveled off between last year and the current year, and is expected to begin declining next year. So, when will it end? If I knew, if anybody knew, then we'd probably get rich timing the market. But the fact is, we don't know. All we know for sure is that it's going down, and until the economy here in Michigan changes, they're going to continue to go down. If they go down at the same rate, 7.4%, for the next several, for the next three years, the city's actually going to collect less revenues, property tax revenues, in the fiscal year that will end in 2014 than it did in 1999. And this chart here illustrates that. Where the paths diverge is next year. We know that we're going to take that steep ride down over the course of the next year. But where we go for there is the subject of speculation. I would stress that these are incredibly conservative estimates. If we stay on the 7.4% trajectory, that's the orange line that splits the difference. And in 2014, the city will collect $6.8 million in property tax revenue, which is less than the $7 million that it collected in 2000. If things are a little bit worse, if we have 9.7% decreases, we're going to go even further back into the past, and property tax revenues will be 6.3 million. If things get a little better, and our decreases are only 5% over the course of the next several years, then we'll hit $7.3 million in 2014. So, when will things return to normal? As I mentioned, Proposal A caps the property tax increase at the lesser of inflation or 5%. So even when things do get better, the city's property tax revenue is not going to decrease at the rate, is not going to increase at the same rate that it decreased. So go ahead to the next slide, and you'll see those same three options, the purple line, the orange line, and the red line, that I just showed you decreasing. Assuming they were to bottom out in 2013 and level off, if they started to climb at 5% a year, which has never happened before, then in 2035, the city's property tax revenues would catch up to where they would have otherwise been. That green line on top represents what would have happened if the city's property taxes kept growing at an average rate of 3.3%. We don't know if we're going to end up closer to the purple line, or the orange line, or the red line. The only thing we know for sure is that we're going to be somewhere within that range of options. And all the space in between the green line and the purple line or the orange line, whichever line it ends up being, is money that the city's not going to collect, and that the city's going to have to reduce its expenditures. So that's a pretty big gap. Sorry, do you have a question?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
I...
Can we continue going?
No, I can stop and answer them now if you prefer.
Well, I think what I've heard is about the Proposal A, and I like your graph, is that if your property value increases, the city won't be collecting on that tax. So it's a structural problem with the state's tax system, right? So in the event that our housing market rebounds, the city still will not be collecting the property tax revenue at the rate that it should be because of the structural tax problem in Michigan.
Yeah, absolutely. Jay Marie, if you back up to that last slide. Previous, click on the, no, yeah.
Click previous, yeah.
Previous. Yeah, that purple line is 5% annual increases, and that's the maximum increase allowed by Michigan law. So the only thing we know for sure is there's going to be a pretty big gap between what the city would have collected if rates had continued increasing at 3.3% and what the city's actually going to collect. And under this kind of best-case scenario, we would catch up in 2035.
Okay. And so to put it back into the story of my house, we've lost $50,000 in value on my home. Our taxes have gone down significantly. When we get back to the value in which we bought our home, the city still will not collect on those taxes.
Right, your assessed value will go up more rapidly than your taxable value will.
That's how fast your home appreciates.
Right, exactly. But that's kind of what the structural problem is here.
Yeah.
And I want to make that clear. In a recovery, in good times, the city still will not be able to collect on their taxes, on these taxes, to get us back to where we were. So it is a structural problem in the state of Michigan. So it's a hard one to get your head around.
And Bob, I got a question about this slide while we're on it. The dates here of 2018, 2023, and 2043 are the dates at which we get back to 2010, property tax revenues, making some assumptions of 1%, 3%, or 5% annual increases, 5% being the headly max, assuming that inflation outpaced 5%. Hasn't done that in a while, but, so we're looking at either eight years with the most aggressive growth of our tax base probably imaginable, well, allowed by law, 13 years with historic rates of appreciation, or just under historic rates of appreciation, and over the last 10 years, that 3.3% has been about as fast as it's ever grown in modern times anyhow. And then 1%, which is probably over, you know, the 20th century, much, you know, is probably between 1% and 3% historic appreciation. We're not going to get back to tax revenues that we saw in this fiscal year and 2010 until 2043, that's another 33 more years.
Right.
So assuming that nothing changes in Lansing with our state constitution or the way decisions that are made in Lansing, we're looking at a generation of decreased budgets, at least, or perhaps two generations of budgets with the kind of decisions we have to make this year. This doesn't take into account state shared revenue, which could knock this down further.
Right, this is only general fund property tax revenue. It doesn't deal with state shared revenue or any other source of revenues. But what it does show is that these losses are permanent. The taxable value that is declining now, even under the best-case scenario, wouldn't come back until 2035. And that's, I hesitate to call that the best-case scenario. It's really the crazy-case scenario, the mathematically possible but incredibly implausible scenario. It's much more likely that these losses in revenue are going to be with us until into the 2020s and perhaps the 2030s.
And so, to characterize this as a rainy day is really probably the wrong metaphor. This is the new reality, rather than an aberration. This is where we are. It's not going to get better in two or three years, where we could perhaps make up some of these differences by spending down our fund balance. This is where we are.
Right. If this was a much smaller dip in the road, so to speak, in the gap between the green lines, the green line and the other lines, if that gap was smaller, if that was a $1 million gap, or a $2 million gap, or a $3 million gap, then spending the city's rainy day fund would be a viable solution. But that gap is, I haven't measured it, it's hundreds of millions, it's a lot of money. And so, the city's rainy day fund is basically a drop in a very large bucket in the scope of this problem.
Okay, proceed.
Thanks. So, why are property taxes decreasing? Well, because we're paying less property taxes. I bought my house in 2002, and as a result, there was a smaller gap between my assessed value and my taxable value. So this year, I'm going to pay $135 less, just in the general fund portion of my property taxes, 14.5 mils. And Ms. Twist touched on that point as well. I've talked with her about the idea of residents writing a check for that portion, donating it back to the city. I haven't yet talked to the city attorney or our finance director on how we might operationalize such a campaign, but that's certainly something that I'll commit myself to. I'll write the city a $135 check, and I'll help facilitate anyone else who wants to do the same. State revenue sharing, it's the second-largest general revenue source. It was $4.4 million in 2001. That's the most ever. It's been rapidly decreasing ever since. In this current fiscal year, it's dropped by about a half million dollars, the largest dollar increase ever, largest percent decrease ever, and it's estimated to drop again next year, because the state of Michigan cannot possibly afford to maintain state revenue sharing at its current levels without additional revenues in its budget, and many state legislators oppose increasing revenues, as has been discussed at this table. This shows what's been happening to state revenue sharing since its peak in 2001. There's a decline pretty much every year, except in 2009. For some reason, it popped up by $100,000, but it's gone back to declining faster than ever since then. Now, that was revenues, that was the three largest sources of revenues, all of which are going down rapidly. Now on to expenditures. The dark blue portion is police and animal control. It's $7.8 million, 34% of the budget. Fire departments, $4.5 million, 22% of the budget. So you see there together that police and fire are well more than half. We have central services, which are a lot of our city's fixed costs. I get into those in a little bit more detail later. The district court across the street's about $1.5 million. Public works and recreation are both less than 5% of the budget. And then everything else, everything here in city hall and other parts of the city government together is $2.9 million, 14% of the total expenditure requests. Now, this gets to my, our neighbor's point earlier about which departments generate revenue. The net cost of providing police and animal control services next year will be $7.3 million, which is to say that those departments will bring in $7.3 million, will spend $7.3 million more than what they bring in revenue. Fire department's less, it's $3.2 million, because it's a smaller department, and we bring in revenue from Pleasant Ridge and Royal Oak Township. Public works, $640,000, again, because most of that department is in general funds, water and sewer in particular. Recreation department, the net cost is close to a half million dollars, because a lot of what they do is supported by fees. If you have a membership to the fitness center, if you participated in a recreation program, you paid a fee for that. Now, the district court is a net revenue generator of about $150,000 a year, and yes, its revenues are due in large part to the tickets that the police department writes. But if you took that revenue into account, providing, the net cost of providing police and animal control would still be $6 million. Everything else, which is general government, generates $8.4 million more than it expends, because it's the other parts of the city government that levy the taxes, collect the taxes, and so forth, that pay for the police and fire departments. Now, the fiscal year ending 2011 general fund deficit, as I mentioned, we had 20 million in expenditure requests, only 6.9 in estimated revenues. Four major contributing factors: contribution to the police and fire pension system, thank you, global financial meltdown; 6.7 decrease in property tax revenue, again, thank you, global financial meltdown; estimated employee and retiree healthcare increases, $412,000, that's a 12% increase; and a $400,000 decrease in state revenue sharing. That accounts for about 2.1 out of that $3.1 million deficit. The rest is in the details, as they say.
Question for you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
The 20 million expenditure requests, that's what people ask for.
Correct.
What did we actually spend in '29? This current year?
In the previous year?
2010.
What did we actually spend?
Yeah, we didn't spend 20 million. It was 18 something.
What are we spending right now?
It was close to 19 and a half last year. 19.7.
19,000. Okay.
So it's not, doesn't represent a huge increase in the price of government. Most of, a great deal of our problem is on the revenue side, but we've got problems on the cost side as well. So go ahead, the next slide gives you a visual representation of how big of a pie the deficit represents. It's about 16% of expenditure requests, which brings us to the $3.1 million question. How should the city eliminate its $3.1 million deficit? Well, that's debatable, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of debate about that over the meetings ahead. But the real question that I would like to point out to folks tonight is how can the city eliminate its general fund deficit? And this isn't really subject to debate. This is examining what, how much control over the budget the city has. So go ahead to the next slide. I alluded to central services and the fixed costs the city has earlier. These are costs that don't change whether we have one employee or 100 employees, and that's a slight overstatement. But we have telephone system, we have insurance, utilities, streetlights, bad debts in our central services, and our fringe benefit pool. We have $2.3 million in retiree healthcare that we have to provide regardless of whether or not we have a single current employee. We also have $1.3 million contribution towards our other post-employment benefit costs for our employees. As I mentioned, the $674,000 police and fire pension contribution, pay retiree Medicare, $206,000 life insurance, $31,000, and retiree benefit waivers of $19,000. Now, those are the fixed costs. The other kinds of costs are variable. And for, to make things simple, I broke them down to labor, which we have union labor and non-union labor, and everything else, which is basically vehicles and equipment and stuff, paperclips, pencils, computers. So this chart shows how much of each, how much there is of each. And the blue, 50% of the pie, is union labor costs. The red portion of the pie is the fixed costs that the city really can't control regardless of how many employees it has. The green portion is the stuff, the cop cars, the computers. And then the purple slice up at the top is the non-union labor costs, which is $1.5 million, or about 7%. So it's, back up to that pie for a second as I, oh, easier said than done. With this in mind, that half of the pie is union labor costs, balancing next year's budget is going to require reducing those costs, both the union portion and the non-union portion. Go ahead to the next slide. If the city tried to balance next year's budget without reducing labor, union labor costs, it would require reducing non-union labor costs and the other variable costs by more than half. So that would be taking the entire deficit out of one quarter of the budget. Now, that's not feasible, because as I mentioned, most of the folks who levy the tax and collect the tax and help pay for the other parts of the budget are in the non-union labor cost section, and it doesn't make much sense to have a bunch of employees if we don't have the computers and the cars and the other equipment that they need to do their job. So balancing next year's budget... So balancing next year's budget will require reducing labor costs. There's basically three options that the city has to do that. Voluntary separations, people leave of their own accord, whether they retire, go into business for themselves, or whatever. The second is concessions, pay and benefit reductions, and layoffs are the last resort. Now, employees, and I include myself, don't want to sacrifice our pay or benefits. And taxpayers, as we've heard from, don't want to sacrifice their services. So we have a natural tension between the two. With union cooperation, employees and taxpayers can share and minimize the sacrifices required to balance next year's budget. Unions can make reasonable concessions, employees can make sacrifices. That's not to say that we can completely avoid reducing or eliminating services, because I think in this situation, it's going to take a combination of both, but we can share in that sacrifice. However, without union cooperation, employees will have to be laid off, and the service eliminations and reductions that are required to balance next year's budget will be greater than otherwise necessary. So that's the end of the presentation. I don't want anybody to get the impression that this is an indictment of the city's labor unions. We have been meeting with them, talking to them, working with them. I'm not going to negotiate those concessions here at the table, but the employees have been very receptive so far, and we look forward to working with them to help solve these problems. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any other questions that you didn't get a chance to ask along the way.
Mr. Brunner, I'm not going to ask any, just because we still have a lot to go on our agenda. Are there other questions that folks have? Yes, ma'am.
I have one, and it was on Slide 14, Bob, and it, which was the slide about general fund property tax recovery, the one that showed the distance between your 5%, 3%, 1% projections. And I think about it in a different way. We're looking at those 5%, 3%, and 1% projections based on what our current taxable value is. To add to our current taxable value seems to me to be an opportunity to sort of jumpstart our recovery. New development, adding new properties to our tax rolls, those are ways that we can help narrow that gap. There are other variables other than just the taxes on our current tax base. So it's my hope, and it's the way, it's the sort of the prism through which I view our possibilities in Ferndale, is that new developments and increasing our tax rolls can help us narrow that gap sooner and jumpstart our recovery.
Let me add one caveat to that.
Sure.
New development outside of the downtown development authority.
Fair enough.
DDA property tax revenue is going to go up next year.
Mm-hmm.
Because of new developments like Rosie O'Grady's. I think it's important for folks to understand that none of that money's going to the city's general fund.
Within the Tiff area.
Right.
The core downtown area.
Yeah. The fact is, I paid more general fund property tax revenue than the owner of that building did a few years ago, because that tax base is frozen at 1980 level.
Of course, if we wanted to, we could talk to the DDA about them contributing towards some of the costs that we pay for, like police, like lighting.
Oh, and we most certainly will.
We probably will.
Yep.
For another day.
So, yes, new, new development outside the DDA absolutely helps contribute to the tax base, contribute to revenues. In a fully developed community such as Ferndale, it's a difficult proposition to add enough new property to the tax base to keep up even with inflationary cost increases.
And just so people don't think that we're saying the end of the world here, over time, there could be millages, you know, next year, we could try to do a millage for police or fire or general millage. The economy will come back someday, and sales taxes, which are what pays for state revenue sharing, may go up, and so revenue sharing down the road. But we do, we do have three or four very, very tough years for sure, and then hopefully, things will start to mellow in.
Or just a lot of smaller years thereafter.
A smaller, less pain, perhaps.
Several years of getting smaller, and then many years of being smaller.
Thank you.
I think.
Yeah, I want to address the millage increase issue for a moment. It's too late for the voters to increase the millage rate to balance this budget, even if they wanted to.
Right, and I am not advocating, but any year or two.
No, I understand, but I know there are folks in the audience that are interested in that issue. Because of the timing of these things, in order to levy a tax on July 1, which is when the city levies it, it's got to be approved, I think, before December 31st. So there's a long lead time in order to.
But could folks work now on a possible millage in November, if they wanted to?
Yeah, absolutely.
For the 2012 budget.
For the 2012 budget.
Sure, for a year from now. All right. Do you, you are looking for a motion tonight to adopt the schedule of meetings?
Yeah, adopt the schedule and the schedule of public hearing pursuant to the city charter at the April 26 regular council meeting.
All right. I'm trying to help move things along. Is there a motion to adopt that, or a motion for that?
So moved.
What he just said. Councilman Galloway moves, second by Baker. Discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Cobby.
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Regular agenda item B, consideration of healthcare coverage cost-saving measures.
Thank you. Councilman Galloway and I each asked the city manager to prepare this, so would you mind introducing for us, Bob Brunner?
Sure. One of the issues that I addressed in my kind of worst-case scenario budget recommendations was the need to help contain the city's healthcare cost, healthcare coverage costs. Healthcare is obviously a very complicated issue, and I didn't deal with it incredibly thoroughly in that particular memo, but if the council wishes, we could talk, prepare a report and come back and provide the council with addition, specific options that the council might consider for reducing those costs.
Thank you. Well said. And again, this is, this is not necessarily the unionized workers, which is collective bargaining, but this would be all the folks who are not in unions, non-union workers, appointees, certain department heads.
Correct.
Requests for information? Again, this is something we want you to help us figure out how to cut costs, so this is a way to move on that. And it's, it is, unfortunately, it's the new reality. Lifetime healthcare, not very many people are going to get it anymore, especially new workers and younger workers. I probably, I won't get it.
New employees like me.
Right.
Me included.
Younger people.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no other discussion, then is there a motion to direct the city manager to provide the council with ideas and reports and motions, actions that we can take regarding employee and retirement, healthcare coverage, cost-saving measures?
I move to direct the city manager.
You'll have to repeat it if you don't want.
All right. I move to direct the city manager to provide the report.
Thank you kindly. Councilwoman Piana is her second. Baker seconds, and so does Galloway. Discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Cobby.
Yes, passed unanimously. Next item.
Item C, consideration of the fire services consolidation.
Thank you. Mr. Brunner, would you introduce?
Thanks, Your Honor. You know, during the course of the last three years, my tenure with the city, I've been involved a lot in the talks about fire consolidation, which date back, I think, five, six years. Fire chief and I met with the city manager and the fire chief of Hazel Park last week. Both cities are facing workforce reductions in the short term and are still interested in establishing a fire authority in the longer term, but there are some short-term options that might help us get through the initial period. I provided a few descriptions of different kinds of consolidation. I think, in my observations in the last three years, one of the difficulties that we've had in dealing with consolidation is that when, when the staff and the elected officials talk about these issues, we oftentimes use the same words, but we don't necessarily always use them in the same way or know what the other is talking about. So Chief Schmidt and I talked about it and thought it would be helpful if he could provide the council with a report on some of these short-term options to deal with the 2011 budget deficit, and then after that point, moving forward, looking at the longer-term options of establishing a fire authority.
Thanks. Chief Schmidt, is there anything you wanted to add to this, or anything you'd like to shed light on?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't want counsel to anticipate that this is going to be a very long report, because after looking over the manager's list and I complimented him for putting it together, there really isn't too much besides a full consolidation that's going to be doable, in my opinion. Mr. Koberger was quite emphatic that they don't even want to discuss anything that's going to cost them money. They just simply don't have it. So for us to sell them this service or that service is not going to happen because he's not interested in it, because it would cost them. In other words, for us to do their purchasing for fire stuff, we would have to charge them a fee, and it doesn't reduce their costs any, because they still have to do it for everything else. So I don't, I don't anticipate that much besides a full consolidation is really going to be, come to any fruition.
I've got, all right, Chief, last time we met, you indicated that the next step in the process was to get the elected officials and the city manager on board, and then that would help facilitate consolidation of the police, or of the Hazel Park and the Ferndale Fire Department. Is this the motion, is the information contained in here the direction you were looking for when you made that comment last week?
Indirectly. In my opinion, the city, both cities would have to support a fire, a separate fire authority. You would have to be okay with the idea of losing some control, similar to what happened with the library, that we are cut loose in the sense that we still answer to you indirectly, but we would have our own separate millage that would fund our operations, and we would have to live within our own budget. As I explained to Mr. Koberger, that his general fund would be reduced because the fire portion of it would no longer come out of there, but his citizens would have to pay an equal or greater amount in the form of a fire millage. So that's, I guess, both cities would have to be okay with that idea. I think in the short run, even with some major concessions, it would cost as much or maybe slightly more. The savings are going to be down the road in economies of scale, if there's any of that left. I mean, both departments are going to get, have seen reductions already, and we're going to probably see some more, so.
So, Chief, you know, forgive me, I don't mean to be, to be sharp, you know, I'm an attorney and, you know, trained to listen carefully and ask pointed questions, but, you know, what I heard last week was your impression, and again, maybe I heard wrong or you spoke a little bit more generally than you intended, but that you needed to get the support of city council, of this city council, before you could go forward in talks to, you know, bring some greater consolidation to our two cities' fire departments. Today, I'm hearing something different than that, which is, it's not possible without some much bigger framework to operate, and, you know, a new governmental entity, perhaps changes to state law to facilitate that. So could you help me better understand, you know, what it is this city council can do to help facilitate the coordination of efforts between City of Ferndale and Hazel Park, regardless, for the time being, only of the costs, what can we do to facilitate and move that process down the road?
I guess it's that I have no expertise in writing a ballot proposal, or, I mean, we've taken, we've come to the point where we're in total agreement, both departments, that it's the right thing to do, that it would improve service, and it's the case now of, okay, how do we take the next step? And I guess, I can't, I can't, I don't have the expertise to write the ballot proposal, to put it out there, to know how much to ask for, that sort of thing. I guess what I'm looking for is that both cities now make it a priority to move the process to the next step, which would be to, to explore the millage and put it in writing and put it out there for the, for the people to consider and vote on.
Okay, so, and again, my understanding, is what you're saying tonight, then, that the fire department doesn't have a role in that, that it's the city council, the city attorney, and the city manager, and the fire department wants to be on the sidelines?
No, no, no. Well, no, and I don't, I don't try to imply that it's your responsibility now to carry the ball. We certainly are right there with you, but I think without the technical support of the finance department, the manager and such, we were sort of at that point where we can't move much further.
Okay, so when you were saying last week that you felt as though it were, you needed the support of the elected officials and the city manager, you didn't mean to imply that it was your impression that we didn't support consolidation, but rather that the technical expertise to move that process forward.
Right.
You believe is finance director, city manager, city attorney?
Pretty much. Yeah, I understand that you've supported it. You have right along, but it's, you know, it's, how do we move to the next step? And I guess it's up to the council to instruct the powers that be to move it to the next step.
I'm going to assume, I'm going to assume that there's lots of expertise out there, and I'm wondering if groups like SEMCOG or MML, or even the Michigan Suburbs Alliance could assist. But I have a question. Chief, the document in front of us says that while we can't right now, obviously, create authority, a new authority in the space of time for this budget, the city manager lists a number of other options, including consolidating administrative functions between the two fire departments, executive consolidation, which is both departments have separate operations, but I'm guessing maybe that there's one chief, functional consolidation, partial consolidation, full consolidation. Are these, are these subjects that you are knowledgeable enough and can work with the city manager to bring us some options?
I can. On the surface, though, I give you an example, the fire marshal's function. We could certainly do that service for Hazel Park, but we would have to charge a fee. They're not interested in paying a fee for that service.
Well, do they have a fire marshal?
They are using line officers to facilitate some inspections.
Well, what if, just for.
And they are, at the moment, okay with that.
Okay.
That for them to go back to a full-time fire marshal would cost them more money. They're not willing to pay for it.
Well, no, obviously, we're not going to do anything that costs more money. The whole point of this is to cost less money.
But I think one thought, not to suggest that this is a viable option, is that we provide them with fire marshal services, and they provide us with fire services for the east side of Ferndale. And that's perhaps almost certainly not a valid trade-off, but, I mean, I think we're looking for collaboration on that level. We provide them with fire marshal, they provide us with a fire, I don't know, chief, or they provide us with ambulance services, or something where it's no out-of-pockets.
We both save.
We both save. They buy everything for both of us, and we, I don't know, cook them meals. I don't know, you know.
Well, without sounding pessimistic, I will give you, I will explore all of these options and give you some answer on them, but I really, honestly, don't think that there's anything there except to move towards a full consolidation.
Okay. Well, and that's what we want to do, I believe. So we need to start that now, because obviously, we're going to be losing budget funds until 2043, and maybe by then, we could get the consolidation.
Well, and I just want to make it clear that the options outlined in this memo, I don't think they're good ideas necessarily. It was really just a description for the council to show the range of ideas, but I think in order for the council to take that next step and say, okay, we're ready to bring additional resources to bear on this fire authority issue, I think it needs to deal with the immediate question of, can Hazel with the immediate question of, can Hazel Park and Ferndale work together with existing firefighters, collaborate in a way that's better, more efficient than what we do today? Or is that not the case? Are we ready to go to that authority step? And then we can have, we can sit down and have a much more thorough and detailed discussion of that option.
And again, I mean, I think we've really got to stretch ourselves here, and, you know, to think, maybe Ferndale doesn't provide any ambulance services, and Hazel Park provides ambulance services for both cities, and we do fire for both cities. Or, you know, again, I don't know what the solution is. I'm not a professional firefighter, planner, chief, any of that stuff, but-
There's one chief?
There's got to be. I just find it hard to believe that the two cities can't get together and figure out some way to collaborate to maintain services in the short run while we're working on this. So maybe I'm wrong. Maybe, you know, I just hear everybody tell us why we can't do it, and, you know, we need some-
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I, with the Suburbs Alliance and our work with consolidation, fire authorities are one of the hardest things to do in the state of Michigan, and we are embarking at the front of this process. And what I'm hearing today from the chief is that we need a stronger leadership team addressing this issue, not only through Chief Kitchen, but also through the city manager's office and through the finance department. But I also think we need support with our leadership team from the outside. Almost the discussions about fire authorities that I have heard of, particularly down river with Lincoln Park and Melvindale and those communities, that they've worked with outside agencies to help them through this process. And I'm wondering, have we solicited any support from an outside agency like the Michigan Municipal League, who is helping cities look at whether or not a service consolidation would actually be financial, make financial sense, either save money or just remain at cost and improve service? Through my experience working with all these consolidations, you don't get all, you don't get all, you know, you don't save money all the time, and you don't improve service all the time, because the makeup and the unique needs of each community are so different. And so this is why you need someone from the outside to help negotiate what are the different things that we need to do. Have we, has the city of Ferndale ever done a financial study, or is this really the next step? How do we start looking at merging our two, our department with Ferndale or Hazel Park to create an authority? And I really kind of think that's what I'm hearing, is truly the next step. Is this even feasible at the high level, looking at this? And then you have to dive down deeper into the details.
Well, the city of Ferndale, Hazel Park, Mazin Heights, and Royal Oak embarked upon such a journey by-
2004, 2005.
Yeah, and the final report was issued in May 2007. And we've got auto aid, automatic mutual aid, out of that effort, and not much else.
To the chair, councilwoman, the county was interested in facilitating our consolidation and paid for plant Moran services, which turned out to be, in most opinions, a waste of money. They took us around in a big circle, and we ended up right back where we started from.
Yeah, and it's a sort of a new, a different situation where we were back in 2004, we are now with our financial position, as well as other cities' financial positions. We're really at kind of like, we need to do something different, but how do we make it work? And so I would recommend that we inquire with MML. I've talked to one or two people there and said that they could provide some assistance navigating this quite complicated process, and we're at the forefront of it.
And I agree, that's the next step in the process, is for the city of Ferndale to get its leadership team together and come up with a game plan, assign roles and responsibility for fire consolidation version 2.0. Because after my involvement with the last process, which I wasn't there for the whole thing, but I came away with that believing that if it's going to happen, it's going to start with two communities first. And then another one may come on later, and another one may come on after that, but if the city of Ferndale and Hazel Park can get together and get serious about that, we may be able to do something. But I think, you know, the chief needs to provide the council with a report on what an interim measure might be, and like I said, there may not, there may not be one, but I think the council needs to hear that in order for it to really be prepared to move forward with the next step.
Well, and just to get back to my comments, you know, I don't know if anybody else in the room feels this way, but I have somewhat sense of urgency here. You know, the fire service for the city of Ferndale is going to drastically change in the next two years, drastically. Either we can manage the change, or it's going to happen to us as a result of these budgets. There's no way that we're going to have as many firefighters in two years as we do today if we sit around and figure out ways that we can't do administrative, executive, functional, partial, or full consolidation. And my sense of what this agenda item was, was to create some sense of urgency and publicly and formally express our full support for it. So I am not satisfied with the outcome of having dramatically fewer firefighters and dramatically reduced service in two years, so we've got to come up with a solution. Solution's not going to come from the four of us, because we don't know how to plan a fire department, or a fire district, or anything like that. What we can do is support policy initiatives and ideas that are developed by our staff and/or, you know, unions. So we have the expertise. So I guess what I'm asking, what I'm begging, is tell us what you need, so we can get it to you, so we don't have to have those horrible cuts that are going to happen if we don't do anything. So, you know, I guess we'll support this, but if we get, you know, a report back in whatever, three weeks, that says, man, can't do it, we're three weeks closer to the date when bad things are going to start happening in Ferndale. So if this isn't what you need, chief, help us craft it and give you what you need, so we can move it down the road, rather than just sort of kick the can and have this sort of same conversation next week.
Well, thank you, councilwoman. Like I said, you know, for the past four and a half years, we've beat up this issue, and I think it was pretty much a consensus that a fire authority with its own funding stream was the only way to support the level of service that we had then and would like to have now, because each city was cutting back on its own. So I think the bottom line is that the recommendation will be that we seek to have a fire authority. Unfortunately, as Mr. Brunner points out, we can't get that done this year, probably. And so each city is going to be faced with drastically reduced service in the interim.
Okay, so-
Right. Well, I'm sorry, but councilman, councilman, very well said, but we're still interested in moving forwards for 2012, 2013, 2014, and in the meantime, we may pass this and ask for some interim changes.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've got to come up with some solution in the interim. It can't be four years down the road, get this thing fixed. We've got to come up with something, you know, and we need the fire department, the firefighters' help in doing that. We'll help facilitate it, but we're not trained as firefighters. I don't know how to plan a fire department, and I'm not going to gain that expertise in the next year or two years. So to avoid those kind of drastic cuts, we've got to come up with some solutions, even if they're totally off-the-wall solutions, things that never would have been considered up until now, you know, help us, help you. We'll be supportive of you, whatever you do, whatever you guys come up with, but waiting four years until we get a fire authority is not a solution for me. We've got to come up with something in the short term.
Is there a motion tonight?
I would move that the city council express its strong support for fire consolidation between the city of Hazel Park and Ferndale, that the city council direct the fire chief to provide a report on consolidation options at the March 29, 2010 special council budget meeting, that report detail measures that can be taken in one year, two years, in five years, for, in immediate action steps, that it is not the will of council to, you know, wait until a public, you know, a fire authority be constituted sometime in the indefinite future.
Thank you. Second?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Baker. Discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Galloway-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Mayor Cuffee.
Yes. Thanks, chief. Passes unanimously. Next item, madam clerk.
Regular agenda item D, appointment of Loretta Matchukowski to the beautification commission.
Thank you. We have had an application from Loretta requesting her appointment to the commission. I am the authority on that, I guess, but we traditionally ask council to move in second. There's seven seats available, and I hope you all would move her appointment.
I move to confirm the appointment of Loretta Matchukowski to the beautification commission for a term ending December 31st. There's a blank here.
And I don't-
2011.
Okay.
Let's fill the 2011 seat. She can reapply if she decides she likes it.
You've got it. Thank you, councilwoman. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, madam clerk.
Councilmembers Piana-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Galloway-
Yes.
And Mayor Cuffee.
Yes, that passes as well. Next item, madam clerk.
We have the consideration of a resolution of condolence for Dorothy Webb's family.
Yes, Councilman Lennon asked that this be brought forward. He's absent today. I knew Mrs. Webb, and a lot of people did, but I won't read the entire item, but Dorothy Webb did pass away about 10 days ago. Her funeral was at, here in Ferndale. She was 93, longtime resident, former city councilwoman. She passed away on February 23rd. She was born in 1917. She was affectionately known as One Vote Webb, when she was elected to the Ferndale City Council by a margin of one vote. She was a member of the 25th and 26th Ferndale City Commissions in the '70s. She was a mayoral candidate in 1979, and was a longtime Republican Party activist and delegate in 1996. A long history of community involvement, helping to implement Meals on Wheels in Oakland County, area agency on aging, awarded the lifetime service award by Ferndale Police Department, and a lifetime member of the VFW. On and on and on, community leaders, community service in many, many ways, honored by many leaders. Her kids, David, Cheryl, Cher, Lenore, and grandchildren as well. Could I have unanimous support for this resolution?
Support.
Support. Thank you. Thank you, madam clerk, for helping pull this together. Longtime Ferndale fixture. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, consideration of police and fire board purview.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you just very briefly introduce this, and then I will elucidate, and perhaps Mr. Reddish will as well.
Certainly, Your Honor. On October 12th, at the police and fire board meeting, the board discussed the implementation of a media relations policy for the police department. The police chief felt that the current procedure he has in place is sufficient. The, basically, the police and fire board and the chief of police have reached an impasse as to where the board's extent of authority lies. So they have asked that the city attorney review their minutes and the issue and the authority given to the board through the charter, and request council's direction on how to proceed.
I appreciate that introduction. As chair of that board, again, we did bring it up in October, November, December, and January, and did reach that impasse, and thought that maybe we should just hand it off to council, but the question really began over media relations and back in October with regards to the public relations that went on with the county prosecutor and the Ferndale Police Department, and a request that we be able to see how decisions are made with regards to media, press releases, et cetera. And we, the board really has reached an impasse. Mr. Chris, is there anything you want to share with this? And we'll go to Mr. Reddish and the chief as well.
Well, I did receive a copy of the minutes that were provided from the police and fire board meeting. I have provided a correspondence both to the police and fire board. It should have been copied to council as well with respect to the distinction between policies and rules of conduct under the city's charter, and indicated in that correspondence the respective obligations as it relates to policies and the authority of the police and fire board to make rules of conduct for the department, subject to confirmation of council.
All right. Mr. Reddish, do you want to share any of your thoughts? You kind of led the effort on this particular issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I think the description of the backstory is accurate. The, a couple of points that should also be mentioned is that on December 14th, we tried to get a formulation of a policy going and asked the chief to supply the board with policies from similar police departments. He demurred. One of the issues that was brought up on February 22nd was that a substantive policy of dissemination of information to media and public would put us in line with communities and police departments of similar size. I have copies of the relevant, the relevant policy in the police and fire, the police department policies and regulations. If you all want to get an understanding with it, the understanding of the existing policy, the one issue is that the police regulations are not foible because they are police operations, and we don't want that to undermine how the police conduct their work. But I have copies of those policies, if you want to see it. Mr. Chris, is it possible to give those to council without them becoming public?
Well, I'm not sure if council needs to see those this evening. I would suggest that we avoid distributing them and having council rely on them at this public meeting.
Okay, that's fine. So what happened was, on February 22nd, we had reached, as Mayor Cuffee mentioned, we had reached an impasse. This is, I believe, a novel action. Looking back at the past 12 years, the police and fire board has asked the chief to formulate policy or amend policy, and he has complied. In fact, there are four separate times that this has happened. It did not happen in this case. At that point, I drew up a draft of the rules that I thought was compliant, that is, that was within the jurisdiction of the police and fire board. In fact, I would argue that because we have reached this impasse, and the chief has not provided any amendments or suggestions to make a more robust policy, that we take the idea of the rules, we take the jurisdiction of the police and fire board broadly. But in the, in the basic point, we're asking for your guidance. I would urge you, and this does not come from the police and fire board, but rather just as a member, to pass the draft as council, and also urge police department to make a more robust policy, even more robust than what I propose.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Reddish. Chief Kitchen, what can you share with us on this particular issue and how we got here today?
What we have here, Your Honor, is a basic disagreement about what comes under the purview of the police and fire board and what does not. It's absolutely clear that policies do not come under the purview of the police and fire board, although it does come under the purview of the civil service board. In the past, I have more than graciously turned over the, our policies and procedures and rules to the police and fire board as a courtesy, but- Fire Board as a courtesy, but the understanding is clear by charter that the Police and Fire Board does not promulgate policy, but just rules of conduct. The way it generally happens is, since we are experts in the field, we generate policies, procedures, rules, and regulations. We submit them to the board for input, and then we go from there. We have not done that in some time. This board member decided that we needed a policy and was informed that he couldn't write policies, that I write policies, and that doesn't come under the purview of the board. He became quite adversarial, declared himself as such, and then submitted, under the guise of a rule, a policy that he obtained from Midland Police Department.
Well, Chief, did you ever offer the Police and Fire Board the Ferndale Police policy and rules on public relations and media relations?
We have two rules in place that would come under the purview of the Police and Fire Board, yes, and you have copies of them.
Okay. And would you think that the, if the policy really, dealing with public relations and media relations, doesn't come under the purview of the Police and Fire Board, do you think it would come under the purview of the city council?
It would come under, first of all, here's the way it works. The reason rules and regulations and policies and procedures are important, other than giving guidelines for performance and behavior for officers, is that they become, officers become subject to discipline and the violation of those rules. Now, and the only time the Police and Fire Board would ever hear a hearing is of an officer would be in a discharge situation. If the officer availed himself of the Police and Fire Board for that ruling, and that is never, ever going to happen, because, because unions and grievance procedures supersede that, as do the Civil Service Board in this case, because everyone's a civil servant, that would be their logical recourse. But no one's going to do that either, because they have a much better chance of prevailing through the grievance process with an appeal to the circuit court. Okay, so this, this board basically can do anything it feels it wants to, and it has no jurisdiction in any regard, unless there's a termination. And if you think someone's going to get fired and upheld over violating a, a news media policy, it just isn't going to happen. So this, this is a great big nothing. We have a layman coming in, snatching a, a policy under the guise of a rule, and trying to force the, which he did unilaterally, by the way. You're on that board, and I didn't hear any, any meetings or anything that, that there was, I mean, he brought that, we didn't, no one on that board got to see it except 15 minutes before the meeting. And I know you're in the same boat I am. So what we have is a, a, a policy from Midland Police Department, stuck under our noses, labeled as a rule, to get underneath the, the charter language, as something that we're expected to adopt. That, that has no bearing on anything. The way it usually goes is because we know what we're doing, we, we will write, or we would write, if we felt we needed it, a policy on that, we would subject it to you and the Civil Service Board for review, and only to the Police and Fire Board as a courtesy.
All right. And you don't think that you need to write such a policy? You don't need it in Ferndale?
You know, media relations is, is a whole different bailiwick, and Midland, you know, we don't deal with the base city times like Midland. That's a very cursory and, and policy that I saw. I, I, I see hundreds of these policies, thousands. I've written hundreds of them. I know the difference between a policy and a rule, for sure. And I know that the Midland Police Department's policy isn't a good fit for the Ferndale Police Department if we decide to have one. The thing about policies, especially with media relations, is that there's, there's a lot of different applications for which way you go. And right now, we're not comfortable writing one.
Okay. Yeah, I just, thanks, Chief. I just, I want to share just one or two things, just to clear up, make sure that people understand that Mr. Reddish had the full support of all three members of the Police and Fire Board, and that while he may be a layman, he's a volunteer, and he's, he's a member of a board and commission, like many hundreds of volunteers who help in the city, and was basically trying to facilitate progress, and was acting, again, as a result of some issues that occurred in October with some pretty, pretty controversial headlines in the newspapers. Councilman?
The charter says that Police and Fire Boards shall have the power to make rules for the conduct of the Police and Fire Department. And our city attorney's letter makes a further distinction between, alluded to by our chief, of rules and policies. I'm not sure I appreciate the difference. I mean, Chief, I know you-
The difference is, Councilman, through the chair, of course, is that in our book, they're clearly delineated, and this, this book was adopted by the Civil Service Board as well as the Police and Fire Board and council in 1999, I think. Number five in our definitions describes policies and procedures. Number six describes rules and regulations. The charter says that the Police and Fire Board can generate rules of conduct, completely distinct from policies and procedures.
So, when I was on the Police and Fire Board, we adopted, we wrote with Captain Collins, a procedure for dealing with the media and incidents of police officers being killed in the line of duty. I helped write that. Is that a policy, or was that a rule?
I'm not familiar with what exactly was written.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there was a whole procedure about who would, who the media would be directed to, how the family members would be contacted, how we would shepherd the family through the life insurance provisions. There's a whole, pretty detailed, and lines, sure, the work was done by Captain Collins, but we did get involved in it. So I appreciate the distinction that some things fall into rules, some things fall into policies. But reading through our attorney's correspondence and just listening to the comments made by folks here tonight, I'm not sure if someone dropped a written page in front of me, how I would be able to distinguish, without a title on it, how I would be able to distinguish whether it's a policy or a rule.
You'd have to read the definition.
Okay, so it's-
We're not, if we, I mean, there's a reason Police and Fire Board has our, our book. And if we write a new policy, we're not adverse to input on it. But we write the policies. The Police and Fire Board doesn't. They can write a rule evidently by charter. But, you know, we're, a lot of this is semantics, and a lot of it is, doesn't have any bearing on anything anyhow. Because the Police and Fire, if someone violates a rule generated by the Police and Fire Board, they have no authority to reinforce it.
So a policy is defined as an overall plan embracing general goals and acceptable procedures, especially of a governmental body. Whereas a rule is a regulation or bylaw governing procedure or conduct? Well, that's the opinion, that's the definition we've been provided by our city attorney.
Well, I provided two. I provided the, the language of the, the current rules and the definition of policies and procedures and rules under the current rules that have been adopted and approved by council most recently in, in 99. I also, for clarification, provided a Webster dictionary, because I think you're right. They do become very close, and it is capable or possible that you could confuse the two. But normally, a rule is designating a particular required conduct of the officer, and it's prescribing conduct, whereas the policy is more of a broad procedural directive as far as the implementation of a goal of the department.
So the policy might be, be nice to senior citizens. The rule might be-
Don't hit senior citizens.
Don't hit senior citizens. Okay. So in our, in our, or help them across the street.
It's, it's prescribing conduct.
So the guidance for the police department relative to the handling of the media for, or relative to issues related to an officer, you know, killed in the line of duty, is that, was that a policy, or was that a rule?
I don't recall that particular, I'm not sure, I don't recall. I don't recall having involved in that.
That sounds like a rule to me. I don't know. I don't know what it is.
I mean, if it was step-by-step process from what happens all the way through, that's, that's your policy. That's what you follow. It's your bible. It's your goals. It's your method of acting. But, well, let's, let's try to, let's get this to-
Council, can I just make a point?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reddish.
Excuse me. I think there are a couple of other points that need to, that need to be brought into focus with, with this designation, or find this, this very great distinction between policy and rule. First of all, is that the Police and Fire Board's authority comes not from the police. That is not from the manual of the police, although it does explicate the definition. The policy, the, the authority, and thereby the definition of the Police and Fire Board should come from the charter. So if you're going to limit the definition of rule, and rules, rules of conduct for the Police and Fire Board, then you're also limiting the definition of rules for all the other boards in the charter. And that is going to be huge, because if you look at how rule is defined for something like a civil service, that's much broader than the definition provided for Police and Fire. That said, we're at another issue, and that is also in the charter. This is in the 1927 version. It says that if there are, that if there's authority vested upon two people or two bodies, then it's supposed to be shared. And that's exactly what we're talking about here, is shared authority. So.
Yes, sir.
The problem is, is that the Civil Service Board basically dissolved the Police and Fire Board in 1946. And this, this is a civil service environment where they basically trump everything that happens at this board. So-
I understand. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Could I ask a question? I'm, I'm trying to understand what this grew out of. And are there different repercussions for violating a policy versus violating a rule? Is that where the distinction comes in? Is that kind of what the, we would rather something be a policy because it has lesser consequences for violation than a, than a rule? I'm, I'm just sort of trying to understand why you would want something to be a policy and not a rule, or you would want something to be a rule and not a policy.
Because policies are very general.
Okay.
Rules are, are more narrowly focused and tailored. And it depends on what rule or, or policy. Policies are written very generally as guidelines and how to perform tasks. You, their, officers are granted great latitude in, in a policy. Rules are more strict. You can't drink on duty. You can't sleep on duty. You know, that kind of thing. So, and discipline is according to, to that. But the only time the Police and Fire Board has any purview over discipline would be a termination, and unless someone, you know, did something over and over and over bad, a termination for violation of a policy would be extremely rare. And then, I guarantee you, they're not going to come to the Police and Fire Board, because their, their redress really is through union arbitration and grievance, and then circuit court.
All right. Not sure where we want to go, but again, the issue came about because of concerns and issues around media relations. What does, what does this body, the city council, what would it like to do in terms of this issue? There is a recommended motion. Or is there something else you want, or further study? Again, it's, it did reach an impasse of the Police and Fire Board, so that's why it came back to us. Came to us.
I guess I hate to turn the question-
Go ahead.
-back a little bit to, to you, Mayor. I feel, I, I didn't entirely understand the, the depth of this issue. And I'm still not, I will admit, entirely sure what we are asking the city attorney to do right now. It seems that he's already made a, a recommendation as to who has purview over policies and who has purview over rules. So we are asking him to, to draft a rule, which we've just been told is narrower than the policy, and under the purview of the Police and Fire Board, rather than the administration of the police department.
I mean, my understanding of the history of the Police and Fire Board, having served on it, and having been a hot potato politically, is that it was largely dormant until two mayors ago brought it back up. That while it's not entirely consistent with the Civil Service Board, it's never been repealed. The voters essentially ratified the existence when the former mayor, Mayor Porter, I think, I could be wrong on this, but, you know, put it on the ballot to get rid of it.
Actually, actually, Mayor Porter did try to get rid of it. I believe city council voted to keep it, I believe.
No, it went to, it was a, it was a charter amendment that got voted down. One of the few charter amendments that's been voted down, that's been proposed. I know that when I was on there, we had, I think, and I could be wrong, it's eight, it's 10 years ago now, we wrote a policy, or we, we wrote something, either a rule or a policy, on tasers, on breathalyzer use, on, you know, conduct of the department for death of an officer in the line of duty. And there was, there were four of them. And I don't remember what the other one was, but I think it's taser, breathalyzer, death of an officer, and something else. I don't know whether those were rules, or policies, or regulations, or something else. But we did, we took some action, and I don't know what they are. The Police and Fire Board, for better or worse, is part of the city of Ferndale government. You know, I, I think there's two issues here. One is whether what was prepared by Dr. Reddish is appropriate. And I understand that there's some aspects of what he prepared that are both rules and other parts that are policies, and that perhaps it infringes on the role of the, the police chief, which, in his administration of the department. And I think the bigger underlying issue is, what is the Police and Fire Board's role within the city of government, within city government? I think it's a mess. I think it's confusing, but it's there and has some role. I'm not sure I entirely agree with the police chief's comments that it's just a total sort of non-entity that doesn't have any power. But I certainly also agree with the chief that the Civil Service Board creates a lot of confusion. And certainly, the discussion of policies, rules, and regulations has left me completely confused.
It is dry, but let me just share that, that I think you're missing what part of the issue is tonight. If you look again at the history of the issue, and why it started, and why it went for four months, and why it came here, and in the recommend motion is that, does the council wish to direct the city attorney to draft rules for the conduct of the police department pursuant to the charter, for rules for the release of information to the public and media? Now, maybe the council doesn't want to do that, but there have been issues. Go ahead.
If I could, Your Honor. I mean, that's certainly not my requested motion. My, my suggestion in my correspondence was for both the Police and Fire Board and the chief to try and, and come up with a appropriate rule that would meet the needs of the department, and, and try to work together. I'm not sure if that can happen. I haven't been at those meetings, but that's the best course of action. I think that the proposed motion is to the extent that that absolutely can't happen. And certainly, I, I think city administrations hope that that can happen, that those two can start to work together. But in the event that either party says no, can't, then, then this would be a fallback type of-
Well, we could ask, we could ask the parties again, but it's been four months. So again, it began in October, went through November, December, January, and there wasn't, there didn't seem to be any willingness to sit down and work together on a policy.
But if I could just ask through the chair to the city attorney, if, using the example, our policy is to be nice to senior citizens, and the rule is help them across the street. If that's the policy and rules of the, if, if the policy of the police department is to be nice to senior citizens, is it your opinion that within the power vested in the Police and Fire Board by the city charter, that they have the authority to write a rule- and Fire Board by the city charter, that they have the authority to write a rule for the department saying, it's your job to help, you know, people, senior citizens across the street, and help them, you know, whatever, you know, take actions to further that policy?
Yes. Subject to confirmation by council. I mean, that's expressly stated in the charter provisions. Police and Fire Board can't do it, and it doesn't end there. It needs to be ratified by this board. And I apologize to council for the flip remark earlier relative to the rule distinction. I was not intended.
May I ask one last question, Mayor? Is there currently a policy in place in the police department that governs release of information to the media?
Yes. Rules.
There are currently rules?
Two rules.
Just two rules?
You have them.
I don't have them with me.
We don't have them, and our attorney just said not to give them to us right now, which is fine, if we don't want to enter it into a public context. So there are currently two rules in place in the police department. What would be, why would we not want to work with the Police and Fire Board to either strengthen or refine those rules?
They have the rules. They're welcome to review them and, I mean, one's under actor statements by members, and the other's by dissemination of information. It's all we need. And they are rules, as defined by the definitions that I think are the only ones applicable, because they are in the book that was adopted by the board. Rules are simply guidelines to govern the conduct of all members of the Ferndale Police Department, period. Policies and procedures are a directive issued by the chief to guide and determine present and future decisions, or describing a method of performing an operation, or a manner of proceeding on a course of action which affects the entire department. Quite distinct, quite different, and quite appropriate, and by the way, the only ones applicable in this case, because they are part of a book that was adopted by the board. You can't go changing the definitions just because you pick up a different dictionary. And there are two rules that the board, of course, is welcome to consider. That clearly under their purview, and that's what exists, so. But what Mr. Reddish suggested is clearly a policy, when two rules exist.
Has the board attempted to modify those rules, or are they not sufficient to meet what the board is trying to accomplish, Mayor? Or Dr. Reddish?
My recollection is that we didn't even get to discuss much, that it was pretty much a stone wall on both, that there was no interest in discussing, or?
Right. I mean, there are three roles actually, or three policies from the rules and regulations. And the idea was to make them more substantial. The chief, on three separate occasions, said that what are in the policies that exist are sufficient, and there's just a general disagreement there. My own take is that if the rules remain, which themselves are vague, that we're going to continue to have problems. And that's why I sought out this draft from Midlands, Oak Park, and some other communities that have similar police forces. So that's the reason.
So, so we have two, we have two rules that deal specifically with interactions between the PD and media?
Not specifically, no.
But the rules are more specific than policies, right?
The dissemination of information.
Then, okay, so it's dissemination of information, and what are we titling the other one?
Extra statements by members.
Extra statements?
Extra statements.
Oh, extra statements. Well, if those are rules, and rules are clearly covered by the charter, then would a resolution to this whole discussion this evening, so we can move on to the next thing, be just to direct the Police and Fire Board to review the police department rules regarding the dissemination of information and extra statements of officers? For possible revision and clarification?
I thought that what I just heard was that that was where this started, but that there was no interest from the police department's side in revising those rules.
Well, but, and again, I'm just trying to sort of look at the charter. Subject to confirmation by the council, so it has to ultimately come to us. The Police and Fire Board has the power to make rules for the conduct of the police and fire departments.
And then they come to us. So that might be the resolution.
So, the Police and Fire Board gets to make rules for the department, they get reviewed by us for adoption, right?
But I would certainly hope that the chief would continue to participate, or begin to participate in that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, of course. So is that where we are? Is it to the point where we need to review whatever was prepared by the Police and Fire Board? Is that the next step in this process, and then we get to debate it up here?
Well, that's one option. I mean, my communication suggests that the draft currently embodies both rules and policies, and that it really exceeds the level of authority regarding the rules of conduct that is the province of the Police and Fire Board.
Hence the motion here.
That's right.
Which is for him to take the document, call it down to just the rules, send it back to us.
After review by the Civil Service Board.
Well, it's not in the motion, but.
Is that accurate, the Civil Service Board?
The Civil Service Board would review these rules.
The Civil Service Board would have to get a chance to review it, because they would be the hearing body on a violation less than termination. Well, the only way the Police and Fire Board would hear a determination of discipline would be in a termination, and that's not going to happen in this case. However, if I discipline somebody for, now, this would be the only time I could think that someone would keep it in-house, would be for, say, a day's suspension for violation of a rule, and failing, or not thinking, not having any confidence, perhaps, in the union process, they would then avail themselves of the body that's in force, and that would be the Civil Service Board.
But I mean, Chief.
That would be their choice. But they would, in a practical matter, that would be only in a minor situation, because if you don't prevail in front of the Civil Service Board, you are not going to win that circuit court.
Chief, there's actually another issue, and that is, if an officer is going to be terminated, it needs to go before the Police and Fire Board. So it's not, it doesn't just go to the civil service, but also, I mean, the jurisdiction of the Police and Fire Board is much broader than that. As if, if you want to terminate someone, it needs to go before the PFP.
If the officer decides to.
Right. And that's happened twice, I believe, since 98, so it has happened.
Not for violation of these.
Certainly not for violation of media, but for other issues.
All right, is there, we've got to get moving on. This is 10:30. I'm going to make a motion to get some action on this, or just get this moving. Let me see here. I would move that the city council direct the Police and Fire Board and the police administration to review the rules and regulations of the police department regarding dissemination of information and acts or statements of officers. They review those rules and work collaboratively to determine whether revisions, updates, or modifications of the rules are necessary, and to report back to the city council with their findings on or before the first regularly scheduled meeting in May.
And that's dealing with public and media? Public relations and media?
Relative to those issues. I think those, the two rules we need to look at are dissemination of information, acts or statements of officers, and that they be reviewed in light of concerns raised by Police and Fire Board members.
Thank you. I understand that motion. Councilwoman Baker seconds the motion. Questions or comments on the motion? So it's, we're sending it back to the Police and Fire Board and the police department, directing them to work together collaboratively?
And provide us a report of what?
Yeah. And to bring back to the city council any proposed changes at the meeting in May, first meeting in May.
I just hope that the two sides can actually come to an agreement. I feel, I'm not sure this is going to help them get past the impasse. It is movement forward, but we're, again, throwing it back in their court.
Well, it's a direction from the council, though, so there is some strength to city council directing its board and its appointee to take some action.
Council's directing the mayor, basically.
What's that?
The council's directing the mayor.
And that's okay with me. But you too. You and I, and the two other members of the board, and you can bring Captain Collins. Anything else?
I'm still not clear why the, we don't have to keep laboring it, but I'm still a little unclear why you can't share your rules with us, why they are protective, why...
FOIA?
If they're rules, and we're transparent government, aren't they, these rules available for everybody to see? It's how we enact them.
Chief, aren't they part of your manual of, there's certain exceptions from FOIA, which include the police department manuals? And I think these rules may be in that manual.
I think there, I think we can make objection to some FOIAs, but I think ultimately, they probably are FOIA-able.
Is council allowed?
I'm not the FOIA guy.
You can, council can have them. It's just.
I think this would be helpful.
Important to have them.
We don't want them made a public record.
Debated during the council meeting, I think it was important to debate the language of the particular rule.
As a council person, it's hard to help them, or help them overcome the impasse when I can't even, when I haven't even seen the rules. I'm missing a pretty significant piece of information to.
Oh, it's something you can see.
Okay, well, all right. Well, it just hasn't been shared with us as part of our packet tonight, to help this conversation going. So anyway, there's a motion.
I think that's part of the confusion up here.
But that's part of the problem, is that if it was part of our packet, it would be part of the public record, and that's not ideal, obviously.
All right, so we need that information.
So we need to talk with the chief and each get a copy personally of this, I imagine.
All right, thank you for helping me talk through that.
Yeah, I.
A little bit more.
The clerk's office will get us a copy?
Okay. So the motion's done.
Huh?
I don't have them.
You don't have a copy? Can you get a copy for the clerk?
I think maybe you should get them from the lawyer, and maybe retain some attorney-client privilege.
All right, we'll get them from Dan Crist. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes, that passes, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Regular agenda item G, consideration of the letters of understanding between the city of Ferndale and AFME Local 3120 and the Ferndale Police Officers Association.
Mr. Brunner?
Thanks, Your Honor. Back in January, the city announced its intention to initiate a voluntary separation incentive program, which will allow the city's senior-most employees the opportunity to retire early, and the city's junior-most employees and those most vulnerable to potential layoffs to voluntarily separate. We distributed the letters of understanding and the release agreements to the unions in February, and two of them have signed those letters and returned them to the manager's office in time for me to bring them to you tonight for your approval.
So we need to approve these?
Yes.
Obviously. And how many unions have not returned them yet? Well, three? Are there five unions altogether?
Yeah, six.
There's six. So what about the other four unions?
Well, that would be the subject of agenda item number 12, closed session to discuss collective bargaining.
All righty. Request for information?
So, I mean, this is just receiving them, acknowledging that our two, the two unions, public workers, laborers, and patrol, received these offers, acknowledge receipt?
No, this is going a step further, saying, thank you for your participation. Now the city can offer these extra benefits to the members of these unions. That's the thing about collective bargaining. Not only can the city not take away pay and benefits prescribed by a collective bargaining agreement, but the city cannot provide union members with additional benefits that are not provided for by those agreements. So in order to pay union members extra pay and benefits for their voluntary separation, the union must agree to that. So this is actually approving that agreement, which will allow members of these bargaining units to either retire early, or otherwise voluntarily separate and receive.
All right, I would move that we approve the letters of understanding between the city of Ferndale and AFME Local 3120 dated Thursday, February 25, 2010, and the Ferndale, and between the city of Ferndale and the Ferndale Police Officers Association dated Monday, March 1, 2010.
Thank you. Motion made, seconded. Galloway, Baker, discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have consideration of consent agenda item F.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question, since it is late, but, Mr. Brunner, this is our capital improvement program, and what threw me, and I don't even know if I can find it now, I had it all here ready to go, but it lists a whole lot of items for 2011 this year, including, including rebuilding a new courthouse and multimillion-dollar changes to the police department, and just a whole lot of stuff. So, my understanding is, we haven't voted, and we're not going to do all these things. It was 10 millions and millions of dollars.
It's $10.5 million.
So what is it we're adopting? I mean, this document isn't really what we're going to do, so what is the point? I just didn't want to vote yes?
What is the point? That's a great question.
Sorry.
The point is, is that the state adopted a new planning-enabling act. The state statute, which basically allows the city to have a planning commission. And it gives that planning commission the duty and the responsibility to adopt a capital improvement plan each year, and which then gets forwarded to the council. Now, last year, the finance department developed a much more detailed capital improvement program, which the council adopted. This year, in working with community development director Shear, having, this is the first time that the planning commission has gone through this process. They struggled with it. We struggled with it. It's kind of new to everyone. And when push came to shove, I had more important things to do, namely, deal with the budget, the planning commission.
I understand. So you're telling me it's not, my voting yes on this isn't saying that I'm supporting all $10 million worth of those projects.
No, it's just to receive it.
And I really liked the narrative, where they talked about their priorities, and green development, and doing sewer repairs before roads, and, you know, I like that a lot. So, thank you. I won't belabor it any further.
I have one addition. Oh, wait, you go ahead.
One of the other important things about the capital improvement program is that it's actually for, this is a 10-year plan, so fiscal years 2011 to 2020, and the planning commission will continue to be involved in the process, and likely involved earlier from here on out. But one of the things that we struggled with was whether or not we were supposed to, under the state statute, take cost considerations into consideration. And we were advised that we were not. We were supposed to look at these projects from a cost... cost-neutral point of view, that it was obviously the decision of the Council when it came to make expenditures, but that the Planning Commission should take a look at what realistic steps are in a sequential order and what priorities are, obviously with the direction of our department heads. So this is a document that was put in place by people with no authority to spend money.
Obviously.
But it, I think, could help lay out plans if at some point in the future we were looking at what should come first, look at our master planning processes.
Sure. It just threw me because there was so much in 2011 and not spread out over ten years.
There was so much in 2010, too.
To build on what Councilwoman Baker has been saying is that the capital improvement plan is also a way to keep the goals and objectives that stated in the master plan in the forefront of the budgeting process with City Council. In my experience working with other cities is that sometimes the big expenditures of what can take the city forward aren't in the forefront of the budgeting process, and so things get left off and you're not planning and saving for the capital improvements that will really help the city provide its services and grow the community. So it's another advisory bit of information coming from our professional volunteers on the Planning Commission.
That's a good way to put it.
Thank you. That said, is there a motion for that item?
I would move to receive and adopt the City of Ferndale Capital Improvement Program for the fiscal years 2011 to 2020.
Support. Motion made, seconded. Baker, Galloway. Discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker--
Yes.
Galloway--
Yes.
Piana--
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes. Passes unanimously. Council appointee report, Madam Clerk.
Well, I submitted this to you originally in February and updated it and brought it to you again, so you've had plenty of time to read it. I just want to highlight one thing, and that is we finally have some movement with the state. They've actually agreed on a process by which we might be able to implement instant runoff voting. The first step is to have the city attorney prepare a legal opinion as to why we, as a city, believe we have the legal right to do this. I've asked City Attorney Chris to have that by mid-April, and we'll submit that to the state, see whether they agree or not, and then we search for software, and we work on getting that certified.
Wow.
So there's a long process ahead, but at least we finally have a direction from the state other than just no.
Thank you for continuing to ask.
That's very cool. Yeah, I mean, and the authority comes from the voters. The voters overwhelmingly support-- overwhelmingly supported that.
I'll take that.
Thanks, and your report is chock full of excellent work. You do an excellent job. Any questions for the clerk? The office looks great. You've made changes up there at very low cost. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That brings us to council liaise on reports, if any.
Are there any tonight, Mr. Brunner, or council members on any of these organizations?
I don't have anything tonight, Your Honor.
I don't either. Madam Clerk, next item.
Call to council, Your Honor.
Julie Hall, Recreation Department Director.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? Jay Marie Eubanks, Finance Director. Byron Fotidys, DPW Director.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Fire Chief Schmidt.
Nothing.
Roger Schmidt. Police Chief Michael Kitchen.
Nothing for the city, Your Honor.
Chief, we wanted to ask you a quick question with regards to overtime costs that are going to be increasing here. Or are we, because of the issues going on with the Oakland County Prosecutor, our police officers are now having to go to Pontiac? Is that every day or every week, or what's the story with that?
It depends. If we have an in custody, we have to go right out. If we have felony warrants or DWLS twos, then we wait to get a bunch of them before we go out.
Is that going to affect our budget for now, in terms of travel or overtime costs?
Are this business--
It could, but most of it's done during the day, and what it does is take us away from our other duties and takes an awful lot of man-hours to accomplish something that should be done over a computer.
Okay. I'm just concerned about-- and I've talked to other council members about the costs. Is there interest on council to at least get a report from the chief on what these costs could be and how it might impact our budget?
It's probably wise.
Chief, there's consensus up here. We could do a resolution if you want, but could you get us a report in the next-- by the end of the week that might elucidate for us new costs that would be incurred by our officers having to drive and/or overtime in terms of going to Oakland County now to get warrants?
If I can quantify it, yeah.
Okay.
It's-- if it's not overtime, it's just officers' time away from-- it's just an inconvenience and not being able to accomplish something that should be done without moving around.
That's a cost.
What's that, Councilwoman?
I said, "That's a cost," the cost of time lost, and it's the argument that we use for, you know, things like implementing fees for service in the clerk's office or the DDA, that it's-- there's a processing cost. So it's not out of line with the way we think about other costs of business.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Brunner, anything to share?
Well, I'm sorry she left, but I would like to recognize Community Development Director Shear and the-- her work with the Planning Commission, the zoning ordinance is a great update, and we do find ourselves dealing with these prickly zoning issues from time to time. So it's important to have a high-quality ordinance, and I think they've both done an outstanding job. Also, do want to thank Assistant City Manager Eubanks for all her support. I couldn't have made the charts and graphs in the budget presentation without her help and review to make sure that they're accurate. And we've all been putting in a lot of extra time, not so much extra, but accelerated time and effort this year to be able to present this budget to you early so that we have an opportunity to hash these issues out and do the best job that we can for the taxpayers by the Friday, May seventh deadline.
Thank you, and, Mr. Brunner, good job to you on that presentation. It was clear, concise, understandable, if not scary news. It was accurate in reality. We need a dose of reality sometimes. Madam Clerk?
Nothing further, this evening, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Piana?
I was just going to ask, Bob, can you put that presentation up on the city's website so that people can access to it?
Yeah, absolutely. I had meant to mention that earlier. It would have been up there sooner, but we were literally working on it until hours before the meeting, so it should be on the city's website tomorrow or as soon as otherwise possible.
All right. Just one comment. Keep it short. I was at the Ferndale Education Foundation Annual Dinner, and I had a great time. What a great turnout. I think everybody had a good time bidding on items and just generally meeting and talking to Ferndale residents. So I encourage everybody to go next year. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Galloway.
The hour's late. I'm not going to make a big spiel about the budget, other than to say that we certainly appreciate citizens coming to the podium, sharing their concerns. You know, we're concerned about all the same things that you are. We're citizens of Ferndale, and the things that concern you are the very things that concern us. All the information that we're looking at in order to come up with our budget next year is publicly available. The budget numbers were part of the council packet this evening. They're online in the packet that we received. And we've got a lot of smart people who work for the city. We've got a lot of smart people who live in the city, people who have expertise that could easily, but, you know, for a little different result in the election or just their desire to, you know, having time to run, could easily be sitting up here or, you know, leading one of our departments or one of our unions. If you care as passionately about the things as you, you know, as you express up at the podium, dig into the numbers. Take a look at what we're looking at and make suggestions, specific concrete suggestions, as to how we save the services of most interest to you or how we generate more revenue in an acceptable way. One of the things that's always been a little bit troubling to me is that we have meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting for hours on end, planning the budget, and nobody ever shows up to offer their input. It's the City Council and our department heads going over stuff that we largely already know. If people from the community could come in and offer a fresh perspective or new insights into the same stuff that we're looking at, it could be really helpful and perhaps provide solutions that we haven't considered. So we're going to have, I think, twelve meetings between now and May seventh. Excellent opportunities to add your thoughts. And what I've experienced, what's been, you know, encouraging here is when someone does get a very specific idea that they believe in strongly and come to the podium and support, oftentimes it gets implemented. So you have a great opportunity to influence the decision, but coming up and just making blanket statements like, "I love this" or "I hate that" doesn't help us formulate the decisions that we have to make. No one's looking forward to this budget process, but if we all work together, I suspect we'll end up with a product that, you know, leaves Ferndale in an okay place. That's it.
Thanks. City Attorney, I forgot to ask you.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mayor Protown, Baker.
Just another thank you to the Planning Commission. It was a, in my opinion, an unprecedented effort in the City of Ferndale. It's not that we've not had planning commissions work on zoning ordinances in the past, but this is a new way of thinking about attracting business to Ferndale and the way that we communicate with potential business owners, potential new residents, people who are looking to put additions on their homes. You need to be able to understand the zoning ordinance. Obviously, we have the CDS Department to assist with that, but to be able to read in simple language, as simple as possible, what you are able and not able to do, it is just a way of welcoming businesses and new homeowners into the community and a way to-- the first step, in my opinion, in jump-starting some of that new development that's going to get us out of this budget hole. We have, in addition to opportunities in our downtown, opportunities all over this city for the reuse of our industrial buildings. It's something that I see happening. All the time, I always say, in the neighborhood where my dad has his shop, there are the most interesting things going on. We have everything from auto repair to candle making to machine repair and cabinet making. It's-- and it all happens within just a few block radius and oftentimes within the same building. We have business incubators opening in our former industrial spaces. We have a few particularly large ones that will take likely some state and federal dollars to rehab, but if the will is there, if people understand what is permitted and that Ferndale is interested in doing business, you know, if we go out there and we look and we ask, the business will come. So changing the way that that ordinance is presented to the public is just a huge first step in jump-starting our economic recovery here in the city. So thank you again to the Planning Commission for that huge effort. The last thing is just to save the date to my colleagues here and to everyone at home. Ferncare's Second Annual Fundraising Dinner. It sold out extremely quickly last year. We've already sold several tables this year. It will be on Thursday, May the sixth. It will be, again, held at the Royal Oak Elks. They did a great job for us last year. We may need to expand to somewhere larger. Who knows? Maybe boogie fever next year because this event is hugely popular. So again, Thursday, May the sixth, at six o'clock, the Ferncare Dinner. Tickets will soon be available online, www.ferncare.org.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I was in Canton, Ohio, where the headlines were all about budget cuts and layoffs. I brought the other day's Daily Tribune in. Each day this week and last week, they listed another city that's about to go through budget cuts, layoffs. The key, folks, remember, is that we would prefer not to lay off anyone. Our steps include talking to the unions first, looking for retirements. Every person who retires, who's close to retirement and takes this buyout, is one or two people we don't have to lay off. Union negotiations can enlist all of us to share the pain as opposed to laying off a dozen of your fellow workers. The mayor of Royal Oak evidently was laid off, so he is unemployed. He's quoted as saying, "I don't know where my next paycheck is coming from." I've taken a 20 percent pay cut at my job, my regular job. I'm down to four days a week because of the budget situation at the Michigan AIDS Coalition, and I want people to know that the people at this table have already okayed in the budget a 10 percent reduction in their compensation. Forty dollars for compensation for phones is going. It's a small amount of money, but that's 10 percent of what the council members make, $400 a month. So the key here is we're going to sink or swim together. We need to try to share this. And since we were talking about state law and how we have a structural problem, our state representative and our state senator are holding a town hall meeting coming up on Thursday, March the 25th, at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center, and they will be talking about Michigan's tax structure, which is what we were just talking about. So it's all serendipitous. We are going to close the open portion of the meeting and go into closed session if I get a motion to do so.
I would move that we enter into closed session for the purpose of labor negotiations pursuant to Section 8C of the Open Meetings Act.
Support.
I heard Baker second first to Councilman Galloway's motion, so we are going into closed session. We'll take a three-minute recess.
Let's take a roll call vote on that, Mayor, if you don't mind.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Madam.
Councilmembers Galloway--
Yes.
Piana--
Yes.
Baker--
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes. And so we are going into closed session. Your-- the lights will go down. Your show will be off the air, and we'll take a two-minute break.